Yeah, I just saw your email just before I left, so I figured I'd send it to you and respond to it tonight. About the 29,000.
Oh, okay, sure.
I saw it like three minutes ago, so I figured you'd be on your way.
Any second, that's what I figured.
That clock is wrong.
That clock is.
Correct.
Wrong.
I want to call us to order one minute late. Okay, um, I want to re-speak some rules of the community room. I'd like to see everybody wearing masks, keep them on, and don't do like I did, lower the mask, talk. Keep your distance, don't move around. Set up the right spacing. Because we have some number of people that are going to be on YouTube. If you're recognized to speak, please identify yourselves so they can know who you are if we can't do it, we don't know who you are. So are there adjustments to the agenda? Did I cover everything? I have one. For the warrants review. Oh, and like a log any action items that we come up with. Make sure we have our owner assigned so we can start tracking them. Okay, then? Log action items, you take minutes on, so that we can record them and sign owners, track them. For the best of our memories, we shall recreate any that we put last time, and I will report the letters to Atwood and McQuillan to co-op the delivery. I don't think I had any other action items.
What? But you wanted that discussion added to the agenda?
I would like action items logged. In this particular case, as we place number 11. So we do the action items that we come up with during this meeting, just make sure we know who owns it. And we'll start tracking them in follow-on meetings. So the follow-on meetings will have action item review as like number three or four on the agenda.
No, I like that, but as it relates to tonight's meeting, is there a new agenda item?
Yeah, just change the agenda.
Okay, so new number 11 is action item review. And then that's it.
Okay, okay, is there any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Penny?
I just want, this is Penny Alley, speaking as a member of the Historical Society. I just wanted to report that the community pickets, well, for celebrating Heritage Day, we have 3,000 come. And I wanted to publicly thank Neil Payson for the use of Grammy Park as a deal on the corner of Cleveland and a lot of these.
Thank you. I'm pleased to hear that, I wish we had known more in advance about it, because we should have published it now.
I spoke about it at the last Blackboard meeting.
Yeah. Be even more, something that I think is probably planned weeks in advance.
Well.
I would have liked to have it on the sign out here, just marketing of it, if you will.
We came up with the allure of our regular open house, which would not happen.
I think it's a great idea. Heritage Day, that's a good one.
There is the talk of the town's enamel of that.
And just to be clear, we did put it through the website and after the email list, sir. It should have gone out a handful of days earlier. I dropped the ball on that, Penny communicated that to me, and then, so I pushed it out to the public just a little bit later than Penny had wanted.
I, that's my comment, I feel, I think we also got to be careful, recognize that was not a town event, the historical society event. I don't know where we draw the line on publicity from non-town entities, but. You didn't think it was a town event, Heritage Day? I guess I applied.
Not, it's, she said it was a historical society.
Concert, but I think if I thought it was a town, wasn't the whole town invited?
Well, I'm, but my point is, I think that's, that can be a slippery slope.
Yeah.
And I went busy, I guess I went to see the town take over. So anyway, just not, I'm not saying we shouldn't have done it, but I know, having sat in chair similar to Owen, sometimes those things tend to grow. And all of a sudden, you're being asked to do something where, I don't know if the town should be involved in that, you know what I mean? The obvious is obvious, I guess, on either end, but the middle's not so obvious.
We did run into that once, the leaks earlier.
Just for thinking about this topic for future things, the way that I worded the release from the town was, we wanted to make you aware of a press release from the Historical Society. And then the one liberty, and I talked with Penny about this, that I took was adding additional language to kind of protect the town, because it was encouragement to congregate, you know? And so I added some just additional language reminders about CDC fiscal distancing, best practice, et cetera.
Walter, if I could ask, there is a link to the Historical Society downtown website.
Okay, minutes of August 11. I had a couple of comments. Nine C, I believe that should be July 1, the June 30th.
Did I do that again?
I don't know, but that's what I bullied.
Yes, oh, yeah, no, correct.
And the other thing is, I really like the way you bold the motion, because it's quick, you can quickly go right to the hot matter. And, but you didn't do it on H. All right, yep, no biggie, but I really do like.
Nope, I got you. Yeah, I tried to do motions italicized and.
Yeah, I thought, and I think it's both.
Yep, I'll fix that.
So with those two, or somebody else's. Yeah. So E, second bullet, the promissory note, it's just spelling error of the promissory. You made comments in here about amended community room policy was reviewed, and that this is down our whole business. And that the stump pump policy was reviewed, no action was taken. There really wasn't any action planned for that, we'd already approved it, already signed it.
You had, it was because it hadn't been signed, and that's why it was reviewed again.
So that, so that we did take action and sign.
Uh, the action to approve everything was already done before that. It was, I didn't have those, the language change incorporated into the document. And so it was just showing you all that the document had been changed. So it was just more of a review than any sort of official action taken from the board.
Still confused though, you showed us the changes of the amendment, you showed us the amendments basically of the policy.
Right, because we had discussed.
We had discussed.
The changes, but you hadn't seen them in that clean copy. And so what I provided last meeting was just those clean copies of the things that you had already taken action on, so that you could make sure that how you related it to me was incorporated properly into the policy. So if you, if I somehow miscaptured it, or put.
Well, we wouldn't have signed it until we saw it written down in the document, right?
I, so I guess I've always been just slightly confused, and maybe John can illuminate me on this. The gathering of signatures, the necessity for the public observation of the gathering of signatures. So what happened was a public discussion and a public vote in the affirmative to change that policy. But the gathering of signatures to then log that policy change in, the gathering of signatures was not done in public. It was done over time, as you all, because I had to amend that document if you typing on my end. John, do you?
Well, I do, but I think that's a different issue. I have to admit, I agree with you, Jim, when I first read that, I didn't know what you were trying to say. And then I said, ah, I'm not going to feedback. You think that to me?
I already, I already, no, I already asked you. You're all minutes, you tell me how you want them to be in a good collection.
I, it's not clear to me what you're saying.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, and, and I think all we did was we viewed the final budget.
Correct.
Yeah, but we had already approved. Maybe that's what it means to say.
So just, just put something, additional language in here that said, this was already an approved item, it was just a review.
You don't have to say that. I didn't need to get that properly. Drop the, no action was taken, which we might have. Just say the board reviewed the amended, the finalized amended dump stump policy. This was about the madness, right?
Correct.
Yeah, dump stump, the stump dump, whatever it was. But on your other question, which is whole other subject matter. And technically, I think all the issues have been done in meetings, publicly. I mean, lots of towns know, long history of that, but I think, which came to show.
How does that work with, when you all vote to empower one individual member to sign?
There are a few exceptions, I think, a lot of the law. Discussion for another night.
Okay, I just, I'm, I'm always trying to do it better.
Okay, their motion to approve that, I mean, yes. Approved in second, in all favor? Okay. August, September 3rd. September 3rd, for all. Yeah, 1st. Oh, I haven't been, okay, okay, September 1st. For the benefit of the audience, this was a meeting with Real Term, and it was the company that is managing the project to replace our streetlights. Pickoff meeting, they reviewed project plan at a workshop. I have one comment, realizing that these are historical records, we all know what this was about, but three doesn't really say what it was about. I was just adding the words, representatives from Real Term went over the installation process regarding the new LED streetlight. I mean, I know what you meant, but someone 12 years from.
Any additional language or changes in that one specifically?
Any feedback from what, anybody want to start?
I happened to cross Tom Hedstrom, who is doing the installation, or his company is. They're, because of grounding, because of various different things, they're a little bit slower in the other town. And I told him that it was one thing that I stressed and stressed and stressed, was a better understanding of what's grounded and what's not. And he said that as much as people have been trying to get that across to the folks that do the audits and the people that compile all the financials and everything, they're still finding that that seems to be a difficult intellectual hurdle to spend that time and really understand of the 51, how many have proper grounding, how many need to be changed? It's not a deal breaker by any stretch, but it's an annoyance and causes them. But I will just say this, that Tom said the exact same thing that the Real Term folks said, which is, our 51 streetlights is going to be about a two-day project for him and his organization.
But what about the CFP block?
Uh, we just, I just need your signature on that. We had been waiting for everything for Matthias to be settled. And with the length of time that that took to get that loan finalized, we just have you and I haven't connected on getting that signature.
John, John's latest name is spelled right back there.
I believe that's how I wrote it down, based on what he had put on that Zoom call.
That's what I recall, tertiary. Your motion? Are you waiting? I can put the call, we already made. I move the minutes of September 1st, be put into the amendment. Second. Remove the second for the discussion, all in favor? Now. This is minutes of a workshop that we held on September 3rd, where we discussed with John Fallon, who is the former town manager of Thomasville, or St. George, and Ron Smith, who is president of RH Smith, a company, a founding financial firm. And the discussion centered around the do's and don'ts and the must-haves for a town to change its fiscal year. And what the, kind of the best practices are for what you embark on that. Just a couple of spelling errors, I think, so again, the last, I think I've got three in the last sentence, where the answers are. Yeah. Try to spell check.
Yeah, I think if you spell them that poorly, it thinks it's a new word. Other than those twos or anything else?
I'm moving approval and amended. Remove the second, in all favor? Thank you. Okay, treasurer's report.
Okay, um, so in your packet is treasurer's report. C block thing, auto excise, so the revenues that are down, auto excise still. I still don't believe that it's a full and accurate reflection of where we're going to end up. I do believe we're going to be below our projection, but not where we are right now. I do think that people still think there's a holiday on vehicle registration and that nearing the end of the year. You might be keeping up with the governor's orders, Walter, not everyone is. So a lot of people are still operating, so they can be having COVID plates and vehicle registrations are on holiday and things like that. So the hope is that we, in the coming months, see another little rebound in that coming on the year end. But it's probably not going to hit our initial projections.
Why don't we put a reply from the website?
I'm happy to do that.
I might want to say something, but should we fall short, we'll have to pick it up by applying undiscussed thoughts. Where it could be used for another purpose.
Um.
How many people are on your community email?
97 roughly, right now.
Just a general comment, right? We keep talking about things on my website, I have low, low confidence that reaches anywhere near a percentage of population. We probably ought to ask our, our people at some point, how many are even on, because I, my personal experience from the American nation, dealing with a similar demographic, if they're not there.
I, I don't disagree with you.
No, I don't, I would do, it's just a statement.
Yeah.
I mean, you're doing the best you can on, but as a communication tool, I think we're just not there.
There are metrics that can be gleaned from it, WordPress just tracks all that stuff. You know, when the website first went live, obviously everything trends up, because people are in, looking at it, and you're starting at baseline of zero, so everything above that is possible. In recent months, it has trended down, maybe because people aren't exploring as much, or whatever.
Any feel for an average month where it's going to hit you guys?
I can definitely provide that for you all, I can pull it up, you know, at some point, just give you. I think it's probably as simple as just going and hitting a printout, a metrics printout. And I'm happy to do that, because that'll, that'll bring a little more insight into the usefulness of that tool.
Oh, it does more than track clicks, right?
Yep, time, time.
How about your big URL's or your back addresses?
I'm just a washed-up Marine, I don't know, sometimes on, on, I mean, what I, what I've seen on the cursory review of it is how many pages people click, how many click-throughs, also time and duration, that they were actually looking at items on that page. And then how that relates to last week or last month, and whether we're trending up with clicks and amount of time, or we're trending down. But I'm positive, if I explored that further, then it would have some insight that you maybe would be more useful for you.
Okay, do me a favor, Tiffany Molly's, contact me.
Yep.
Arthur, is this in your mailing list at all?
What's that?
Is this something that you could add some value in, looking at the WordPress reporting?
Website, oh, website metrics, viewership, click-throughs, amount of time on page.
Did I become both? Who, in the pages?
Yeah, Molly, Molly has all the credentials she needs to already go in and look at all the backend stuff. Yep, so well, and she was there through the creation of all of it.
Okay. Yeah, I, yeah, and I just quickly, and I, I was, I promised myself I wasn't going to be trying to drive this appeal tonight, but I can't help, I was thinking about the email list, I think that's very effective, and I think we need to find ways to expand that. And I was thinking of a way to do that. And I think one simple way is anytime somebody comes through that door, we ask them if they're on the email list, and if they would like to be, and if they say, no, I'm not, but yes, I would like to be, if they're still have a little form, they can quickly fill out, and we ask for the list. I think, I think that's much more effective when, when somebody shoots something at you, rather than you having to go. Right, now, so I mean, there's one thought to expand that, and I think that's important, sticking out there. I can, something simple. So that'll show up as a new action item.
New action item.
Number 11. Okay, um, did you guys get a chance to look at the, uh, the two spreadsheets that I'd like to discuss with the budget? We made some changes, so I don't, I don't want to gloss that down for. That was these stretches here? There, uh, yes, so.
Yeah.
The spending, the spending by top level account of the revenue. I did. I think it would be very helpful if you had a percentage on this year. Because I was sort of going and doing it myself.
Oh, I see, wait.
Percentage of the unspent. Well, I know that August is so many, so much percentage through the year, and, and, yeah, I was trying to quickly compare that. And in some cases, like with accounting payment, that doesn't work, because it's once a year, but in some cases it does. And I just thought that would be helpful as a format, I will do that. I did like the fact that it pulled out, um, on the revenue side, I like the fact that it pulled out the non-general fund revenues that are captured on the trio report. Because I think if you try to compare the budget, you don't want those revenues in there, they clutter it up. But I guess, I guess I was a little confused about, uh, I'm not sure what ALS payments are, and then that's advanced life support.
Amy, the ambulance bill is in two different ways. One is through Higgins, where it's like, she does all the insurance stuff, but they keep a portion of all the revenue generated. ALS is done specifically by Amy, it's a separate billing, and we keep all of the revenue from that, that's why it's lower.
I guess it just seemed to me that this, that revenue sheet should match, just like we do with the expenses for the budget. And, and it doesn't seem to be back there on the revenue split. I didn't go through the most, oh, but I thought, okay, my intent was to only put revenues in, but we use to offset the budget. So the trust funds, interest, and all that kind of stuff as well. Maybe you have to, but then there's all other. Well, and then you have an earlier version too, so I probably got it, I got the one that I.
No, I, I haven't added in the all other, but I'll just, I'll say this, that we have found over time that not all of the revenues of which the town receives, we make it into the budget. We tried to, on the last budget cycle, grab more of those. So like, remember, we had the long conversation about clerk fees, and what exactly our office gets for revenues? And what we're doing is, every time a revenue comes in, Phil has to place that someplace in Trio, and then it goes under the bank account. But that knowledge didn't necessarily always make it to the budget committee and to the board about, hey, we're consistently getting X amount of dollars for Y item that we process. Because we recognized that after my first year, we did, under admin office revenues, I expanded on what makes up those revenues. So if you look in the budget, and you look in the notes section, under that specifically, I list road signs and copies and all these other various sundries. But there is still a slight disconnect between what we get for revenues, what we put into Trio, and how that differs from what we budget for, because a lot of those are, just, the dollar amounts are so much smaller that it seems like it could possibly get swept under the rug, and then it just all rolls into unassigned fund balance, and it's a good healthy surplus at the end of the year. Is that not making sense?
That's right, except that's not what I'm talking about. What I'm talking about is revenues that are in the budget, not, you know, that would be just here.
You just want the language to be the exact same?
Well, for example, I believe the, the road grant is in the budget. The local assistance program?
Oh, yeah, no, and that, that's under revenue.
That's not, it would be, yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be under all other when I.
Yeah, if, if I added a C.
Again, my, all right, but it still goes down on that point. My point is, I think it should mirror with the budget, so we can just practice, that's my only problem. Okay, so my thrust of view, the analysis was take four private items in revenue that are, first of all, material. And secondly, that are either at risk of overachievement, or at risk, more importantly, of underachievement. So this was the guidance discussion, okay, all right. But if that's the case, why would we promote it? That's not, that almost would have been a real, but that's not a real, that's a third of all. I mean, yeah, if six won't have those, but that would be my, that would, if I were doing it, I should. The number that I would like to tie to, the 175, 700, if I remember correctly, plus the 380, that were the, the revenues that we pumped into the budget. As part of that, so we didn't have to tax people to break, does that make sense? That does make sense.
And just from the office standpoint, we, we strive to get these numbers to you all in easy-to-digest formats that make sense to you all. So we're always happy to take notes and keep trying to tweak and fiddle and make it better over time.
Well, Trio reports, I don't like reading four levels, you have a lead. It's possible, so, um, okay, so, short story here for Thursday night is, we have the minor overspend risk in some accounts. That most of which will be compensated for by fee recomp. Yep, unless we have an unpleasant surprise.
And then the only other thing, on the expense side, that I would note, is, like I kind of tried to in my report, is that, you know, that when you look at this top-level expense, you see that we had a 1.5 and change million-dollar budget. We're, you know, in September, and we fell under 800,000.
Yeah, that, that's.
Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we. Yeah, and I just want to make sure that we stress there are larger payments that happen at the end of the year, and so they're not going to track, you know, day to day because they're incurred at different times. Um, and then really the only other thing is, um, just because you, you brought it up, John, I, I did call about the highway block grant because typically we would have gotten, uh, the state sends something out and says, prove to me that you actually spent the money we gave you last year on roads, and I hadn't gotten it yet, and so looking over, I'm, I'm looking at $13,000 that we haven't received yet. I reached out to the state, they had done an extension on it, and it should be in the mail for me to fill out. Um, so that 13,000 is not on the revenue side, we will be getting around to that.
That was one of my, I have several questions for the revenue, and that was one of them, so, that makes that one.
That was one of the things Phil and I went through to try to understand dates, so that we can give you a better idea on when these revenues will be coming in. Did you have other specific ones?
I did, not on, Walter asked about his notes before, so I have them on the Trio report. Yep, uh, the revenue, uh, the, we still have 80,000 for homestead. We actually, when we did the commitment, we, that was bumped up to 121,419. The 80,000 really wasn't in the budget, it was, it was on a pencil then, on the bottom of the revenue sheet. We, when we did the commitment, we were calculating what we would receive, 121,419. And so that's really the number we've gotten.
Uh, possibly, and I guess this gets into which document or which apparently multiple documents do I ask Phil to look at when the import season, because 80,000 was what we did the entire budget process with?
Well, it's not in the budget, it's a little footnote on, down with the revenue sharing stuff.
Correct.
The budget, but we did the commitment sheet, and this is another argument, you know, for going for fiscal year.
Yep.
We, we based our taxes, our mill rate, on the assumption we would get 121,419. And that's a $40,000 difference. Uh, so to, you know, that's really the number we need to make if everything else is equal.
And that, and I'm, we are again, happy to adjust the directive that I gave Phil, and what I've kind of understood to be is when we approve the budget, Phil goes through with the budget, and this number, this 80,000 was included in the, a budget summary.
Well, it, it really wasn't in the budget. I mean, I, I guess, I don't want to argue that with you, but particularly in the past, you wouldn't have your real estate taxes, your, your, your revenue sharing, your Betty, your homestead account, until all that, until you set the mill rate, and then though it can be added later, if we, uh, and I think that's a prob, that's a problem. I mean, Betty is the same issue, it's only 200 bucks different, so it's not the back end to it, it's obviously a lot different.
And then, this is one.
I had to bring that up for. The, the, the off, the, the offsets in the budget for revenue, uh, or the total offsets are use of surplus, undedicated funds at the time we do the budget, not when we do the mill rate, and then use of reserves and use of revenues that we have control over, our revenues, for want of a better term. And homestead, Betty, and, uh, uh, state revenues are not part of that. Yep. Um, I also don't understand why, just going to break down, on 400, it says we collected no real estate taxes in the office. We've collected a million eight nine something.
Yeah, this was, this was generated, this was, um, oh yeah, no, that doesn't make sense. I was gonna say, I was gonna say this report was generated the second day of September, and we might not have rung them in, but it does say August as the highlight.
Well, then that's.
No, no, but you're, it should be August. Where, where it says August as the header, it should be the entirety, um, of it, so I don't know why.
But it says current month, August.
That I'm agreeing with you.
Worth math.
Yep, no, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Well, um.
A quick, quick thing on that, on the real estate taxes, um, you know, so if, if we were to do some of these things post-commitment and go back in and change, uh, you know, projections in Trio, like we were just talking about homestead and what we did in the budget, fast forward a whole bunch of months, we're doing the commitment, those two numbers have changed. So we can, I can sub those numbers, and that's not a big deal. The only thing that I'll say is trying to put the proper number for, um, real estate taxes in the budget line is only going to be weird because we don't break, like I mentioned in one of my communications to you all, this number, year-to-date, real estate taxes of in excess of 4 million is not exclusive to just 2020. It's people paying down 18th taxes and 19th taxes. We did pull those numbers out today, uh, we're at 1,080,000.
1,089, 5937.
And so we have, but we also, because we were curious, we started pulling up previous years, same month, same time in previous years, and we are tracking, uh, very similar to how we have in other years. Wouldn't you start rating for what the mill rate was and all that stuff?
Well, again, I, that number's almost immaterial to me because there, once you're committed, you know, to Gatsby, they're considered collective, so. We'll get them, but, uh.
The big thing for me, John, is I'd love to at the end of this whole process, and once we in, in my office get better at getting these reports and, and understanding this process better. You had brought up percentages earlier, I love percentages as well, John. And so the bottom percent of total revenues at 705% is thrown out of whack because we don't enter and, and things get confusing as far as what number to plug in. So over time, I'd like to get that percentage of revenues to be a more accurate reflection.
That's, that's obvious for a couple of reasons. You don't have budget entries on real estate, and you also don't have, I'll bring up again, the end proceeds as a revenue, which it isn't. Right, the journal there should be debit cash and credit to account payables, actually a liability. Once you get that money, you owe it back, so.
When we enter a new item into Trio, we reach out to our auditor, and we ask her advice on making sure that we enter it in the format.
She told you to put it into the revenue.
There's been a couple of things that she has advised us to do that I've questioned, and we've kind of fiddled them backwards.
But the other, the other, anyways, let me just go on my question if I can. The auto-exise, uh, oh, excuse, uh, I'm just curious who pays the $2,000 in the little taxes?
Oh, you asked that question before, and I gave you an answer, didn't I, before?
Okay, maybe you can get back.
No, Jan asked that question like two months, I gave you an answer like the next day, I just can't remember who it was.
Uh, the auto-exise to me doesn't look all, um, healthy, I mean, again, is the 49 for the current month a correct number?
It should be.
Oh, I know.
I, I would love to say a resounding yes, but I, I can't based on the fact that there's zero for real estate taxes in August, and then we took in close to a million dollars.
It makes this discussion meaningless, I guess. But, uh, the highway block grant, talked about, uh, the Smith lease, no big deal, but he usually paid that in one payment instead of, he got 25 bucks on it.
I'll look into it.
I mean, usually, it tells me somebody mis-calculated, missed, entered 25 bucks, because he usually comes in a rate of checkbook. Or it doesn't come in a rate of 30. And my glasses are falling off. Um, the flower reimbursement, uh, I'm curious why that's so far off, but did I assume we've got all the payments for that? Um, or some of the payments made in the beginning of the summer?
Okay, and it's, and it gets even more complicated because they do two-thirds, one-third, and on their fiscal year and broken over our calendar.
Okay, I have several more questions, but I'm not giving up now.
What, what I'll just say is open invitation for, um, interested board members that have good things for us to fix on here to reach out off-hours or outside of meetings, and we are more than happy to make clarity on any of this and fix things again to give you all summary reports that are easy to digest.
Let me make this, sure. Do not, ever again, put a new line item on a report in front of us without any citation. Uh, so, the real estate taxes, the hand proceeds, several others of these things, the first time we see them is at a month-end report, and they're completely different from anything we've looked at in the past, and we don't know what that's all about. So if you're gonna make a change, and if Mindy says make the change, let us know, number one. Tell us what it is, maybe we want to convert it to a third. Don't change the recording format, and then surprise us with it, and then we'll reduce this confusion. Okay. Okay, so I missed my 15-minute target, it's pretty, sorry. Um, so, and we're not done yet. Uh, so there are two openings on the budget committee, and Sandra Wallace is here, uh, A, because she's been coming to work anyway, but she's expressed interest in joining the budget committee. Uh, and what I propose to do is I first spend a few minutes telling her about her tonight. I'm gonna also ask Owen to give her the credentials to resume meeting on Thursday night, so that she can go to the budget committee meeting, close the loop, uh, put her and Moira together, so that they can discuss what the budget committee does, how it works, all that. So Sandra, you have the floor for a few minutes.
All right. Um, Sandra Wallace, I'm the fairly new resident of Captain Austin. Um, I moved to, uh, Maine, Maryland in 2017, and spent a year in Austin, and then moved to Austin. Love it, we're sorry that, um, people arrived in the middle of coronavirus, and it was kind of hard to meet a lot of our neighbors both managing. Um, and, uh, I would like to understand more about, um, the situation of the town, the challenges, uh, things to, and when I read in the paper a lot about what to do about Gilbert Butler School, or I hear that there, there used to be this activity or that activity, but a building burned down, and it's sort of faded away. So I would just like to become a more active member of the community by taking a role on, it's something where I think I can make contributions. Uh, so, uh, I'm not afraid of numbers, I have, uh, run organizations and had to deal with budgets. I'm actually likely to get down into the weeds and understand what's going on and where things can be improved. Uh, my own background is not finance, I'm lawyer. Um, I worked for many years for federal government, uh, I was, uh, chief counsel for legislation and health and human services for a very long time. Uh, but, um, I think my own personal interest and my personal abilities would allow me to be, uh, make a positive contribution of the budget committee. If you have questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
I don't want a question responded, I have a question for Owen. Okay, how long have we had that notice up seeking budget committee members? Has, has anybody responded? It's been months, right?
It's been months, and Carrie Baines responded, um.
Okay, but she's already on the mission.
She is, after, after that call went out, yeah.
Okay, is there anybody else responding since her that's interested?
Uh, there were, there, there's one other person that I've talked to, they displayed an interest, but then other items came up, and so they weren't willing to put their name forward for consideration to the board. Um, but.
No, okay. Uh, there was one other person who was referred to me, and I went and asked, so did her, do this, this, and this, in order to surface her candidacy, and she's got a response. So, well, there are still, there are two openings, and I was with, and, and I asked what term is the oldest opening?
I'm sorry?
No, well, is there a term as the oldest opening? The term expires on the oldest opening?
Uh, that would be whatever was remaining on Alan Hall's. And I'm not sure, because he resigned, so I, I don't know what, and I guess I wasn't anticipating uh, consideration of a new budget committee member right now, or I wouldn't. We did talk in the office about the appointments that needed to be done tonight to fill vacancies, but also that one of our other tasks was when we bring new members on board, we need to be more thoughtful about the term and length of term to get them to get back onto a staggered. And, and we would have had that for you all, since I didn't know that there was consideration of budget committee member tonight.
That's the fail.
But, and it's, it's not, we will be able to, I just wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable until John looks at that and tells me what's going on, um, to say exactly when your term would expire.
Well, Alan Hall sets the provider.
I think 22 on the, on the website, it says 22.
Right, that's what I'm asking, what dates are on those, I'm trying to find the longest one. But Alan's 22, so, uh, I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, I'm sorry, Sandra Wallace, Wallace, uh, to complete Alan Hall's term, I think 2025. That's second motion.
I don't want anyone to get away.
That, you know, unvoluntarily stepped out of the case.
It's, can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Why don't we let Sandra spend the time with Moira, and then we do her appointment for 22 seconds?
No, you don't want to let her go.
I don't want, uh, there's a line on the table, okay.
No, no, wait a minute, um, perhaps the budget committee should have a word with people, if they want to work with me.
They don't, because, they don't. But if you know, but if Sandra would like some time, I'm willing to.
No, I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine with it.
It would be a great way to get to know the town, I tell you that. Yeah, I.
That's what's in it for me.
Uh, yeah, the, um, the town, you'll, you'll, I understand this, it's great, but this, this economic model is not all that complicated.
Oh.
It's solid waste, it's roads, it's people-related expenses, fire, ambulance, but it's, the devil's in the details. The fact is, we have secular year-over-year increase, that it's been increasing at an increasing rate, and that's a concern. Well, I can say.
If you'd like to wait, I'll, I'll.
No, 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 I, I, you know, I've, I've established the practice of putting the candidates together with Moira. Not that she has veto or go-no-go power, it's just a matter of courtesy of my team, but I'll draw that attention. Are you comfortable with that?
I, I lost the train.
Do you want to walk out with a appointment, or would you agree to wait for 22 seconds?
I'm happy to wait and use with Moira, because I think as a courtesy, you know, rather than just hitting her, it's what she's got in her comfort. I'm not going to disappear on your phone.
Okay. I've heard that before, too.
All I'll say is I can provide Sandra with all of the access to participate in the, the Thursday meeting, and I would only say if we could wait till the end of the month, now that we're having two meetings a month, that, Craig, you know, it'd also give us a chance to figure out if maybe completing on Alan's term isn't the smartest way to do it, and then you can just have a, of an.
I'll draw my own, and it's Sandra, not Sam.
Gotcha.
Oh.
Pardon?
Yeah, F O N, sorry.
Thank you, Sandra. Well, we look forward to having you.
Thank you.
I guarantee your Moira won't do anything to discourage you. Oh, okay, Penny, Department head. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped, I skipped the 9/11, I'm sorry. I suspect that's Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, it's, like, what's that obvious here, for that, I ask you to round her, I'm like.
Sure.
Uh, so here's the copy of a letter I received from, I guess you're Arthur? Yeah, that's actually me, too, so, uh, any of these passwords, you know, I don't. Yeah, there's just one, great. So I, I, I received this letter from the mail, uh, a year ago, I work internationally, and, uh, so I'm a little bit slow to respond some time. And basically. And basically, I think what happened is, we had a neighbor move in across the street from us, who put in an application, get an address. And I think when Arthur came out to sign the address, he realized that there were two existing houses on the other side of the street, that he didn't have the correct address. And so I don't, I don't have a challenge against Arthur doing the job. My complaint, or my comment for you, as the, as the selectman, is why didn't anybody ever come back to me as a stakeholder in this process, and say that we changed your address from forty-one Pepperdole Lane, thirty-one Pepperdole Lane? The reason I give you a copy of this letter that I received from Arthur, is when you read through the entire letter, the only possible rationale that I can see for changing the address from forty-one to thirty-one is that it should have been thirty-one because of the distance from the street. And so if an ambulance had come to our house, they would be assuming that they're gonna have to drive longer to get to forty-one, when in fact, they would have gotten there too. Now, if somebody had given me that choice, and come back to me and said, Pete, you have to go back and change all of your mortgage documentation, twenty-five other addresses that you have associated with this house, because, uh, your address indicates that you're farther down the road than in fact you are, I would have said thank you very much, but I choose not to, not to change this address. I know that this address has been the same since nineteen eighty-four or nineteen eighty-six. There are five homes on our street, including the new house that was just built, two of them killed the altar at the top of the street, three are at the bottom. Pete, I live next door to the, my next-door neighbor is the mom of the bar chief. Right, we, we live in a fifteen-hundred-person town, I don't, I think the issues are, uh, not, not as serious, not as relevant. So that, that's my issue right now. I guess I'd like to understand, one, if my address has in fact been changed? Two, if my address has been changed, I'd, I'd like to propose that you change your process, and that you don't do this to any of your citizens again, before you give them a chance to respond back and, and voice their input. I, I've lived in Maine for five years, South Compton the entire time. And if I understand the philosophy, range, and of South Compton, it's live and let live, as long as you're not doing something that harms neighbors. And so before, before the town causes inconvenience to your citizenry, I hope that you at least have the courtesy to reach out to those folks and say, hey, here's the issue, do you have a view, how would you like to handle it? I think that would have smoothed over an awful lot of these issues.
What's that, okay. Arthur, comment?
No, uh, that's, which looks well, but we won't be able to change. Well, I think, if we find out that we didn't do something that we're supposed to do about budget allocation, specifically with it. I haven't had time to read it, okay. But I, I, I would be hesitant, I, I certainly understand where Mr. O'Brien's coming from, I mean, I, I don't think we can just willy-nilly stop. I mean, it's, it's, it's laid out in a very strict grid, every fifty feet. Um, and I know we're a small town, but people who work at the ambulance and much their sheriff's department responding, I mean, they're, they're used to that system. So I'm a little hesitant just to, I'm a little hesitant just to tell Arthur, oh, don't pay attention to the ordinance, you know, we'll pay you to change it. I, I do agree, and I think perhaps a letter saying, I've discovered your address is incorrect, I understand, is that correct, it was incorrect to begin with?
Yeah.
Yeah. Might have been more prudent thing to do initially, and, you know, and we, we also have, so an estimate, that's the, all of it, yeah. Hooked it, given it, added, with so many hours. Yeah, yeah. And, and I, and the other thing I can see potentially, and I, and I don't know the lay of the data, but I mean, we could get out of sync, where you could have one, two, three, six, four, five, and that would be really confusing. But, but, uh.
There's a couple of comments coming, but I, I'll give you one example, I live on the Gidd River, and we got a notice from State of Maine Fish and Wildlife during the summer, uh, because of the oyster, uh, production there, and they said, hey, we're gonna, we're thinking about renewing permits, do you have any comments? We didn't have any comments, we're notified, and then we got another letter from the State of Maine a couple months later, saying the application's been approved. Why can't this, why can't the town of South Compton go through the same process and, and come out? And the last comment, when you're talking about willy-nilly, if I, if I live in an address that's been the same since nineteen eighty-four, nineteen eighty-six, and then I get a note in the mail, that you can change from forty-one to thirty-one, excuse me, but that's the definition of willy-nilly in my opinion.
Well, I don't think it was, no, I don't think change, that he was correcting an, an incorrect address.
But it had been, sure, but it had been there, I'm not disputing the fact that, I, I, I accept that, that Arthur's comment that the address should have been, uh, done thirty-one in nineteen eighty-four. My comment is that if it's been that address since nineteen eighty-four, and the difference is forty-one to thirty-one, where they're gonna get to me sooner than they would have otherwise, we've got five houses on the street, the added value of correcting the accuracy doesn't offset the massive inconvenience that it could cause. And there's a, there's an upfront, because there was no communication to other people. So I mean, even, even if you don't agree to change my address back, which I hope you do, but even if you do that, please change the process going forward, so you don't, you don't do this to somebody else in the town. I think the South Compton can do a better job of this, and work more professionally in the future. I think you should hold yourself to that standard.
But, I, I have reviewed the ordinance, you know, the ordinance is from ninety-six, and it doesn't really talk about the procedure for correcting, uh, an address. I don't have the cover for two of them. It's a broadening ordinance, yeah, yeah, okay. I mean, I, I absolutely hear what you're saying, Mr. O'Brien, I think that, just having read this letter, you know, resident, there really isn't even a name on it, I think we could have done a whole lot better personalizing it a little more, and explaining why we were making that, the correction. I mean, we talk about the main law, and the, even give examples of why you would change it, but we really don't talk about your specific residence. So, I, I take on board, you know, we could do this a whole lot better.
I, 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 I see, I boiled through the letter, I think I came up with the, there was only one argument there that was coaching me. But again, my comment is, if I had been given the choice, I would have accepted the risk, and I understand that when I got a slightly inaccurate address, even though I inherited that when I bought the house, that I'm accepting some nine-one-one risks, I was okay with that. Because to me, it did not offset the, the massive inconvenience that it caused. And just the fact that there was no, the process were either wasn't followed, or there is, there isn't a proper process, in my opinion, and we didn't come out of the solvency as a stakeholder, I never had an option to say, hey, thanks for identifying the issue, but I don't actually say that it's worth, that it's worth the, uh, the inconvenience it caused. I think there's a, there's a, there's a risk reward ratio in there, and nobody asked me what I thought, and I would have immediately come back and said, yeah, this has been here since, uh, eighty-four, let's leave it. And my next-door neighbor, I'm sure she would have said the same thing, I talked to her the night before I came over here, and I said, were you happy when you changed your address? She said, no, it's a huge impact of that. This is not, this is, the letter indicates, you know, suggests that I call Spectrum and have them update my E-nine-one-one. Boy, if that was the only issue, I, I wouldn't come sit here for an hour watching you guys discuss other issues to, to complain about. It's not that simple.
I have a question, so there are other mistakes, possibly, here? Is, is it an isolated incident?
No, there's other errors.
No, I know, right, he said he spoke with neighbors, there's, there's a whole, there's a whole street missing.
A whole street missing.
So several people have done this, like, well, three, uh, two, two?
There, there's five, there's five houses on the street, including the new address. Uh, two houses are at the top of the road, so they wouldn't have been impacted. At the bottom of the road, there are two on my side, one on the other side, the new house on the other side of the street, that's a, that's a, an even number, so they wouldn't have been impacted. So what they, what they could have done, is Arthur could have properly numbered the new house on the even side of the street, and left the odd su, left the odd side of the street without any changes. And that wouldn't, that wouldn't work, I think, and that wouldn't have caused, that wouldn't have actively interfered with the lives of, of your residents. I, I think there were a couple of options, and they were, we were never included in the process, the decision was taken, we were retroactively informed, saying, sorry, your address has been here since nineteen eighty-four, now this, thank you, and goodbye.
Again, I hear what you're saying, Mr. Prime, but I'll tell you, the addresses have changed dramatically in the twenty-seven years that I've owned my house. I think I'm on my third address. And that's because the state laws have changed. So the idea of opting out, I don't think is something that we could even consider for you to do. Saying, well, gee, I'll assume the risk, I'll opt out of it. It isn't an option kind of program, in fact, the responsibility is with the town, not just for our own EMS and our own firefighters, but for, we have agreements with St. George, we have Rockland, we have Comptons, all of those guys are gonna come into our town, and they've gotta be able to find your house.
Correct.
So, I mean, again, I hear what you're saying, and I, and I would take on board that the process, we could, we could certainly refine the process and make it a little kinder. But I don't think that the end result is gonna change. The end result is that we need to bring them in compliance with state law.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, again, I would have, I, I think that if you're looking at the difference between forty-one, thirty-one, Pepperdole Lane, right, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about a fifty or a hundred feet of adversity, and basically, Arthur's point was, hey, you're, you should be thirty-one, because you're, you're X number of feet from the street, and you're forty-one, so the ambulance is gonna get to you earlier than they, than they otherwise would. I don't think that's material, and given the fact, I mean, how many things in this town are grandfathered in because they were done incorrectly fifty or a hundred, two hundred years ago? It's all over the place, right? And so when we're looking at somebody, what was missing in this process, Arthur went out and did his job. And then nobody else took a step back and say, hey, do we really need to change these two addresses, is it really worth it? What are the residents that, what are they thinking, and are we, I say, we say a principle, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about odd versus even, I'm not talking about, you know, my address being in front of somebody else's, this was a minor issue, right? We all take it that it's a minor issue, and nobody ever said, hey, is it worth it? And I, I don't think that, I don't think that that hundred feet is gonna principally or materially throw South Compton into violation with the State of Maine E-nine-one-one. That's a common, and, and, and I would like, I would like it would be a bad.
Just coming back to that, nobody knew of us, I mean, Arthur's the only one who knew, we didn't know, I mean, every time Arthur signs a house, we don't, we don't.
But, but can I, can I actually, you just made a point for me, this process is broken, what's the process? Should, before this happens, should Arthur go to Owen and say, hey, I wanna change an address that's been the same since nineteen eighty-four? There's no oversight, and, and again, if, if Fish and Wildlife remain, and send me two notices over the course of a couple of months about oyster beds off of my, uh, off of my deck, why can't I get, why can't I get a letter from you before you change an address that's been the same since nineteen eighty-four, that's tied into twenty-five or thirty different, uh, you know, everything else that I have?
Well, first of all, Owen has nothing to do, Owen doesn't do that.
But, but, but what's your, what?
Well, I mean, so, I mean, you're saying that Owen should have done this, Owen hasn't, Owen's not even in this household.
Okay, but you just, you just answered, you just made my case for me, what's your process? And I think.
The process is, we have an E-nine-one addressing officer who follows the ordinance, he found an error and he corrected it. Now, should he have been, should he have maybe picked up the phone, or gone and knocked on your door?
I, I think.
Absolutely, I, I wouldn't disagree with that at all.
I think you just, I think the process perhaps brought us to this meeting tonight, it's absolutely a one-to-one relationship, there's no surprise that in five years of living in this town, I showed up my first town selectman meeting, because my life is negatively and materially impacted, and I resent it. And it was, and it was unnecessary, and I think you, if you're my selectman, it's your obligation to make sure that the town is not negatively impacting my life, unless it's absolutely necessary, and I hope that you take that responsibility seriously.
Arthur, could I ask you over the years, how many have been, how many areas you've found and corrected just, just broke? At least, huh? I can't hear, at least twenty, twenty, and if you ever had an issue with it, you, because it's never come to the select one, what I've been on, I don't know if it has, or you have.
So, or two years ago, it was prior to that.
Yeah. And, and I guess the other point is, I'm not sure, even if we vote to let it go back to forty-one, we have that.
I don't think, I don't think we do, but it's happened to me twice. Uh, because when it happened to me twice, I went to my mortgage company and everybody else, and I did all that, and I didn't comment, blame it, it's the like workshop, but, uh, not particularly sympathetic. But.
I don't, I don't know if this process, or the comments, or the board.
It does, for open meeting?
I would think, well, I think I heard from Janet, ready or not, there is nothing in there about making these steps.
Correction.
And.
He said correction.
Excution.
No, I think he said correct, correct, didn't he, yeah?
Oh, well, I was asking about, you know.
Talks about other numbers, he talks about.
This is how it shall be done. But that's how the ordinance goes. Um, if, for example, you were to give an exception to somebody, you have created a precedent that every time you came across this issue, you have that coming back, right? But I do think it would be a good idea going forward to have a process that Arthur comes to the ground and says, I'm gonna have to change these numbers, because they're not in compliance with rules. And a letter will come out from the town that would be addressed to the property owner, not to your resident. And it would say, as of such and such a date, under this ordinance, which you can cite to the price, provide a copy of, you're going to have to change your street address, and you may use this letter as documentation to provide to your mortgage company, or whoever else needs to understand that you, without moving an inch from where you are, are now at a different address. So that there would be now a process, there would be some warning to the property owner, there would be something that they could use to simplify the job of changing their address on all their legal documents. But I, but I would think it would be a really unwise thing to ever allow an exception, but you're really on your way down the cliff as well.
Just, just have my comment, I agree with Sandra's, I think Sandra and I are making the same comment on process, and from my perspective, this process is broken, and that's why we landed here. I say comment, I mean, I'm not asking for an exception, I'm asking to go back to the situation, and before this process started, everything was okay. Since nineteen eighty-four, and Arthur came in, what ended up happening was, somebody built a house across the street from me, they got a number, and then I was penalized, because when the, my number was originally assigned to the house that I bought five years ago in nineteen eighty-four, it was off my hundred feet. So I mean, I am not, you know, I understand, I don't think I'm coming in and saying I'm like number two-hundred-and-twenty-six, I'm saying, hey, it probably shouldn't, it probably didn't make sense to change it in the first place, but please, let's, let's correct it this day, not, not give me an exception.
I, I'm, I'll, I'm not willing to vote to change it back, I think after doing what it needs to do, I would be willing to make a motion to require this ordinance to the ordinance committee that we now have, to see if we need to look at, um, some amendments to the ordinance in terms of process. Uh, but I think that's the best we can do. And I, and I feel bad for you, and, and my address, since I've been here since nineteen ninety, it's changed four times, that's why I know exactly what you're talking.
Hey, I guess I don't understand why, I, I've only been changed once now.
Well, because.
I guess I don't understand why, I don't, you know, I would, I wouldn't do something unless I absolutely had to, especially.
Well, the one is the town, the post office there wants.
The post recent change was driven by nine eleven.
Yeah.
And that's where we went from things like Fire Road three ten B, which was my former address, to move a street name on a private road and a house number. So, and again, I didn't even have any say over the name of the road, so.
And again, I, I don't think we have the authority, just quickly reading the ordinance.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm. That was just, I mean, I, I definitely understand where Mr. O'Brien's coming from, I think everyone has some really valid perspective. To me, the root is, is there even flexibility with Arthur to do his job? If there is no flexibility on Arthur assigning the address, then all we're focusing on is communication style, and giving our residents good lead time to be able to transition with ease. But do you have flexibility, if you're like, I, I don't know enough about how he does his job, to where if someone like Mr. O'Brien makes a decently valid case, does the addressing officer have the flexibility or the authority to say, you know what, you're right, I'm going to know that there's an error and do nothing about it? And that, to me, is kind of the root, the, the root question here is, do you even have any flexibility, or are there rules and you follow that?
Or is it like a fall? And I'm not changing those other two addresses, giving her the correct number. And if they got a call where they, they see that the number's not right, if it's forwarded back to the E-nine-one-one, then I get a error or pass it. That's a problem, nor a thing.
Okay, 'cause it seems like one of those cases to where everyone is kind of right here.
Yeah.
Yet, one of the things that I found a lot. Yet, one of the things that I've found a lot in my municipal and or government experiences, like, when it doesn't make sense to you, they're probably going to do it because we're compelled to, to be awkward. And oftentimes, there isn't the flexibility that would make common sense to you and probably everyone else. The question is, do we have that flexibility or is the town compelled to do something that will inconvenience folks? And then the best that the boards can do is try to figure out what parts of the process we can massage to make it as minimally impactful on you as we can, knowing full well, we're going to be compelled to impact.
Oh, I can't answer the real question. I think that's your job. I think from my perspective, the process is broken. I think we've clearly identified this point. And I would propose that you put some kind of a process in place where before you go and start doing stuff, if you have a basic degree of flexibility, somebody asks the question, is this reasonable? Is this reasonable? Does it make sense? Does the, does the negative inconvenience that we're going to cause to a resident of this town pay taxes in this town, is it worth it? Based on the full and quote theoretical advantage that you believe that that resident will receive? Because I can, I can, as a stakeholder, I can answer the question clearly to you. I don't see you having an advantage. I'm willing to take the risk. I see very clearly inconvenience that you can't.
And again, I did say that I don't disagree with anything you said. I just don't believe that the addressing officer has that flexibility to make that call, as, as reasonable as it might be.
Sure. I sent you things to me that are interesting. You just said, I don't believe. And a minute ago, you said, I don't know. So in terms of action items, number eleven, like Chairman was talking about, why don't we put down an action item? We actually studied it, and you determined what your latitude was. And then why don't you put this before the ordinance committee, let them correct this mandate that before Arthur ever changes the address of a resident of South Compton again, that a letter goes out to the stakeholders. If there's some type of reasonable review, if you're allowed to do that. If you're not allowed to do it, then you've answered the question. I can't, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know your, and I don't have time to read your ordinance. It's, what's your job to do that? Somebody's job to do that. It's your job.
Well, we're going to mandate what the ordinance committee does, and it's no sense in confirming it. But I, I will make a motion to table this to the next meeting so we can research this more thoroughly. Okay, I'll sort of go with it.
And I just want to add a comment. In terms of administrative points for setting your agenda for these meetings, may I suggest in future that you start your agenda with items for citizens who are here, and then after that, you go on to discuss the items that are internal discussions selected on the board. Because I don't think you should hold citizens up on a, on a weekday night for an hour while you're discussing internal issues. Get the citizens' issues taken care of, and then move on to internal discussions after that. That's my proposal for setting your agenda to respect the citizens. Thank you very much.
Been moved from seconded. All in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
And, yeah, and then I did print off, and I'm happy to, the sixty-seven page E nine-one-one manual. I can just send it to you all digitally as well, Arthur, trying to turn me.
I think what we need is the law of code.
Well, and that was the interesting thing. I, again, I didn't have enough time to try to figure out every nuance of, of Arthur's job. I don't know.
There's no reference to the nine-one-one manual at all.
Statute, yeah, there's statutes behind that, or is that a best practice?
That's something maybe we've heard that the ordinance committee, they could bump it up against the manual. So I'm sure things have changed. This has been a long time.
This references state statute. Our ordinance references state statute.
Because it predates the manual.
Yeah, and that's a twenty fifteen manual.
Okay. Penny.
Penny Adley, cemetery overseer. Race don't matter. So, Karen, he has been here all week because nearly completed in the entirety the Westbrook cemetery. There were several complicated repairs there and cleaning throughout. And we moved down to Thorndike, where we have completed three times as many repairs, complications, and otherwise. And, um, when he arrived, we went to fill it. Uh, because this was such a strange year, we did not have the manpower that we normally have, so we decided to move to the smaller cemetery, smoke that rips though. And while we were at the village cemetery, we discovered quite a few foot stone, anted stones, and little sections had been scratched by the mower. They now use a fifty-two inch zero turn uh, that, that very clearly is giving the stuff. Every stone has a scratch on it thus far. And these are marble pavilions that are mid eighteen hundreds. One of the previous repairs that was very well done was knocked over and stepped back up with no notification to the town. And another one was just down, and now it was tablet stuck into a thing. So Owen did talk to Travis. They were going to try and be more careful about it. We have done very sensitive repairs at Thorndike, that's like, no more mowing to be done in there this year. It's mostly moss, doesn't grow a lot. I'm very concerned with these repairs. They appear. The exciting news is at Thorndike, we have found one, uh, two more revolutionary veterans and one eighteen twelve that aren't in my record that I used to do the flats and markers. We hope to reach out to K R F A R, American Legion, you know, whoever we can. And, um, we have had people come in that would like to make donations, so. There's donations. What we do with donations could go through the cemetery, you know, come into the town or the cemetery. Uh, there are two big trees outside of the cemetery that could, they're dead, they've been sold into the cemetery. What do, what do we do about that?
At Thorndike? Are you still at Thorndike?
Yeah, yeah. And, um, I'm so excited about these new veterans that I think he's going to grow in the next three days for us. He knows the money approved for the budget, but he can come in back tomorrow, and we shouldn't run out of time halfway through today, so. He is very enthusiastic about finishing Thorndike. Uh, yeah, Westbrook, we found a, a grave that had been lost and has, has documents of that. That was very exciting to see.
Penny?
Yeah.
Westbrook, is that the one you're on your way to hard to list?
Yeah. Yeah, and that was privately mowed. But now is part of the town line contract. I'm concerned about you, you, these little old cemetery are just not made for the modern equipment. There are the new owner of the house beyond Thorndike Cemetery. Didn't realize there's a town contract for mowing there. He hasn't been there for over a month because it's not growing. Um, who is prepared, who is prepared to just start taking care of that cemetery? It is on his deed, and, you know, I was told the town office is paying taxes on the property. Of course, he can't own the grave or markers, but, um, he, he said he'd be happy to mow it if it could offset, you know, some of this tax. So maybe it's time to separate this little cemetery out of the line contract and go back to having a caretaker for each small cemetery. These are rolling and you know, vulnerable stones, because I, I don't know the answer here, but it's it's a big concern of mine at this point, and, uh,
Well.
Race don't matter.
Okay, question for comment. Do you know if the new owner knows if the town has the right of way to?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay. Because we clearly do. We, I remember we purchased that.
Yeah.
Back. It's, we were still around. Okay, that was number one. And number two, I mean, I know in, in the past, there were people that sort of took some of these small cemeteries under their wing and sort of unofficially took care of them. And most of the people are no longer with us.
Well, actually, I, I really grew very young where the caretakers, the O C one was proud of. And they were, you know, elected to those commissions. Tyler Burton was also picked by the town as a caretaker.
Well, yeah, but we ran into a problem, we ran into a problem with that, though. I mean, you remember insurance issues?
Right.
So it's not as simple. Once you, once you hire someone. But I don't see why we couldn't amend the mowing contract. Probably going to cost us money. But to require that they not use big equipment in there, would that not be a possible solution?
I think that contract is a renewable contract, so it could be renegotiated if it's counted.
Well, it is a three-year contract. We've just renewed it. We, we have the ability to amend it over time. Uh, when Travis and I talked, one of the things that I brought up to him was, um, it is my opinion anyway, and I happen to be corrected by the board, that the weed whacking, because, I mean, that, it kind of seems to come down to weed whacking. You save yourself on weed whacking time by mowing as close to the stones as you can without, without hitting them, and that's the problem. And so what I told him was, I don't believe we need you to weed whack every time. So maybe instead, you're giving a little bit of a wider berth around these stones, and instead of weed whacking every time, and especially in dry weather like we've had recently, you can weed whack every third time, every other time, or something like that. Save yourself the end of the time, you know, it all comes out in the wash. But the fact that you came through in mode but didn't weed whack, I don't think we're really going to ping you for that. We're going to ping you for grinding these stones because you're trying to save on weed whacking time. He seemed to think that that made some sense. Penny and I talked a little bit before this meeting. We're going to touch base again tomorrow. And I'll talk with Travis and see if he got any feedback from the crews that actually do these cemeteries, because I talked to him about it last.
But I, I, to me, it seems to me, this goes without saying, that when you contract with someone, you expect, I don't care if it's a plumber or mower or whoever, you expect good workmanship, and that does not include damaging buildings or stones or anything. So, I think it's something, have to find a way to do it. I would agree. And if that people can't mow it and stuff like that, otherwise you say, uh, this is what I'm going to do, and I can talk to this and that, and then we can decide whether we want to mow it or not. That make sense?
Yes. So, uh, you know. If it lasted, I didn't, I would have had these exact numbers for you all. I didn't realize how much we were going to go in depth on it. Um, when we set the budget, we did it on a projection of mowing. Uh, and then we renegotiated our contract after the budget was all set and done. And that, um, three-year contract came back less than what we actually budgeted for. So we have approved money in excess of what we have for the contract. I only bring that up to where if we were to renegotiate some changes in the contract, financially anyway, we have a little bit of flexibility to put more money into the contract, into the budget than we actually needed to pay what the contract ended up being when we renegotiated it later. That make sense?
Yeah. I assume you don't have any money in your budget to take those trees down?
And I, I, we did reclaim two stones, three five stones in the woods there that were down and not maintained. It, it appears, and we didn't mow it for many.
Well.
But, you know, it's encroached, encroached, where it's a little less, little less. And so a few years ago, we paid quite a bit of money to have brushed clear. But, uh, we did find these stones. Uh, Arthur and Walter Gunfield went in and cleared in the area so those stones could be repaired with the pride odds and things were done. So that, that is looking very, very good. And here are two stones that haven't been acceptable for many, many years. Both eighteen seventy-ish stones, one lower.
I would love to offer that maybe we have some flexibility in the road budget for brushing, tree trimming, but we've allocated that to other places.
All right. So what's the action?
Nothing right now. I mean, I officially told Travis that this was something we want, because the, the language around the contract is we can't really break, we can break for no reason, but there, there is, as long as you communicate with the individuals that the work itself are, um, you can break for that reason.
What are you, what are we expecting from Travis? And now that you brought the issue to his attention, if anything? And we have to, I think we should, I think this is serious, not that you follow up your conversation, right, personally? Get it on the record.
Right. Yeah, I, I have, and I, I indicated that to Travis, that I was going to communicate with him to have it part of the official record.
Yeah, and, and I think you can also tell him before, I think, yes, the sense of the board was very concerned about his workmanship.
The immediate action I would like to use that Thorndike Cemetery not mowed, turns around something.
I'm sure he would agree with that.
Okay.
But I think you need to do this quickly.
Okay, Penny Adley, library director. We're going to meet in the next week with volunteers and talk about castle and the assaulting, the limited hours one day a week. See what their thoughts are on me, uh, after that. I possibly will be me after that to continue. You know, I can't ask volunteers to take the, that they are uncomfortable, but many of us are compromised by these issues, so. But, uh, so until further notice, by appointment only, and per side pickups will continue. Lomond Beach Library is going to have a one-year anniversary celebration, and they are going to donate twenty-five percent of their proceeds to the library. So we've got cemetery, we've got the library. And we have donations coming in, and um, I guess my question is, what happens to the donations coming in to the ambulance? Do they go into the ambulance?
Oh.
Checkbook, and?
No, that, that checkbook is, is different now than it was.
But that left grave was with Randall Hopkins.
No, 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 no. I don't. Are we getting it from other events or?
Yeah, yes, we did. Is that the, the next agenda item?
Okay, then I'll, I'll wait on that.
Because it's like, it's similar to what you and I talked about, and I've been working with Amy on, and we've been trying to understand. And what I was, that next agenda item, I'm going to get a sense from them so we can craft policies and all that stuff.
Okay, well, and just to add to that, we are into our seventh league of outdoor exercise classes at Gilford Butler School Building class, playground. And uh, the attendees would like to throw money into the hot or? you know, expenses there. Again, there's money, whatever people said, and so I already said no. You know, we're just going to do this, and we don't want to take the donations. They are very, just putting two dollars ahead into the church pot for the museum there. Like just another, you know, another money issue or thing that was. Book sale continues to do very well. We keep getting more books. The community garden is, you know, putting vegetables out and they disappear as soon as people come out.
Yeah.
And that is getting donations. Someone says, okay, I got eight soups, I'm going to put them on the table, and it's like, go ahead, and they're gone. And so that turned out well. The fabric has been wicked, and people come in and say, here's a bag of fabric, so we put that out. So people are going very well, or that. And I think that, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Penny. Okay. A question before we go into the next agenda, because it's directed at Penny. Penny, how are you handling donations now?
Well, we.
Don't you have a separate checkbook or something?
We do that for the book sale money. That we would just only spend a one day of that. And we just use that money to, to augment the town budget.
Right.
And we spend it on new books, through our computers.
From an accounting standpoint, do you manage that for a separate account? Is that in the drawer, cash drawer somewhere?
We have guild jars that is a seven cash, and we use that to pay for the library loan posters.
Is there a separate bank account?
Yes.
And what's the EIN number on it? Is it the town? Or is it someone's post security number? Or is it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I guess. I mean, I want the.
And are these, so are these donations that are made to the town?
No, this is what we make at the book sale.
And maybe if I just, if we went on to item A under new business, we would roll directly into this conversation.
Yes. Okay, so frame of the question.
Okay, so item A under new business is the account and banking policy. And I'll just, I'll open with what I put in my report, which is staff and anyone that I've come across have zero concerns that there is any sort of misuse, mishandling, or anything that we should be concerned about. However, like we've just been talking about, folks give this money quasi to the town or the town's use and benefits by way of the library director. And she puts it to great use, and I am positive that if we said, Penny, we'd like to look at all the transactional data in this account, that she would be more than happy to do so because she's a very honest person who just wants the best for the town. All that said, we did get pinged on our last audit that the ambulance accounts, which are separate from the Randall Hopkins money, don't have a policy around them on how spending goes.
Okay, now, yep. Let me bring you on. Yeah, and put aside the Randall Hopkins. That's all for, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's in subaccounting, it's different.
So once upon a time, there was a checkbook, a checking account that was under the control of the ambulance. And somewhere along the line, we discovered this. We said, what is? People gave a hundred dollars to the ambulance. Went into that check, they bought jackets or whatever. So we said, okay, we want to take full control over that. But at the same time, we don't want to deceive the purpose. So we called it the director's discretionary fund. The missing proponent of that is we have never said any kind of policy bound that tell maybe what you can and not, because they continued it doing. So that.
Dollar?
Dollar around.
Yeah, we did.
We did. Because it was, he said a limit to how, how big a check to write off. And I bet you you can't find the rest of that.
And that was when Mindy brought it up during the audit, I reached out to Amy. Amy, David, and I believe members of the board all thought that there was some grouping of language. It's just never been able to be produced that I've gotten my hands on. I'm not saying it doesn't exist. Yeah.
Still, still, the director. But initially, took that account into an auditable account.
We couldn't find anything. Not that I've been made aware of. You know, Amy said that she would work on.
Amy was talking about.
Yeah, so she said she was going to work on some policy stuff. COVID happened. Obviously, a lot of flexibility given to our first responders to adapt to that situation. This presents what, it seems to just be an opportunity to take, and like I say, as, you know, things to think about when we set these policies and what I'm asking for today, is some just good guidance so that when I bring you all this policy, it's something that you were expecting to see versus just what I think it should be. And so like I say, and there's some mimicry of our purchasing policy. To have a one dollar to X amount of dollar complete discretionary to the department head. Above that, does it go to the library board? Does it go to the ambulance board? Does it go to the select board? Is it a three-tiered thing, discretionary for the director, approval by the internal board, above a certain amount of approval? Well, that's the.
You're solving the problem. Yeah, can we back up a little bit? In, in ancient history, there were three accounts that I was aware of. There was one in the fire department, there was one in the library, and there was one in the ambulance. But none of them used the town EIN number. What are I definitely? My understanding is that the library of the, excuse me, ambulance town and fire department towns, at some point, several years ago switched over and were using the town EIN number and were being audited by, or audited. I don't believe the library ever switched over because I think it was sort of used more to the friends' account. And the donations were being made to the friends, not the town by the.
Except, these are donations being put into that account. This is the, the fundraising stuff.
Okay. When I use the word donation, I'm using it extensively to include, you know, donations. But my understanding was the reason we didn't move the library over was because those were not funds that were given or, or were the, wherever the towns. But now that's perhaps changed. I don't know. Who owns the books that are being sold? Are they town purchases or town bonds?
They are mostly donations.
Yeah.
But there are a few withdrawals. The book has been written here and taken out of production, but the bulk of it is donated books.
So, but I think that's where it ended. It never, I don't think we ever took on all of these issues. And I think we sort of did that purposely. Because technically, they should be appropriated by town meeting.
And Penny?
Technically, they should be appropriated by town meeting. You know, there's sources of material. And that gets so cumbersome and so defeats the purpose of what these people will make in small, which I want. So I think it was all like, don't ask, don't tell. I'm comfortable, real comfortable with the way we, I mean, first of all, you know the history with the fire department.
Oh, yeah.
And that was an account that belonged to the auxiliary, I understand.
Well, except a lot of the donations were made to the town or some.
But the account was in the name of the auxiliary.
It was, and was not, and that's, that was.
My knowledge that that account's been done away with.
Yeah, that account.
The ambulance account was just one that we never had any visibility of. We, the town was like, money was coming in, donated to the ambulance, like it had been donated to the fire department. Put into this account and was being spent at the discretion of the director. So.
But there was a big change there. It went from a non-town, town to a, a town account.
That's what I'm talking about. This is the time we took it.
Yeah.
The town took it and made it an auditable account.
And put on EIN number.
I hope so, well, let's check on that.
It should have been. Yes, so as it relates to, so we have zero accounts for the fire department. The town has no account. I believe the auxiliary still has an account, but that is.
That money is the money that eventually came to the town, but that auxiliary, that was what originally was. They had a firemen's association. That money was coming in under town. So that's right. Right, but when that's all broken down, we formed a new organization called the South Palestine Emergency Services Auxiliary. That has its own account that's separate, has nothing to do with the town.
Right.
And sometimes they do give a check written to the fire department, but I think Brian takes that.
He's a post.
I think we made it very clear that it's made up of the South Palestine Fire Department, or to the town of South Palestine, and they go off to that town. If it's made up of the auxiliary, then the town's got nothing to do.
What about the, the cash from the food drive?
They give that to you. That's an absolute food drive.
It gets real. I think that's the bigger broader is there are some gray areas. I mean, for example, with, with Penny, and if it was a friends-type scenario, that's great. The library is still a town department. And so that's where that, you know, because it's given for certain purposes and under a guise of a friend, but it is for a town department and then spent for the benefit of the town, should it be audited, auditable?
I mean, if they had a friends in the library and that people donate to the friends, I don't think the town has anything to do with it.
But they don't.
Other than when they give, they give to town, the town. We ultimately might have as a result of the recognition.
Yep. So just to be clear, so the, the fire department has no account within Machias. The library has no account within Machias. When you pull up our dashboard with Machias for all of the accounts related to our EIN number, there are two different accounts specific to the ambulance. What, what, it's just a checking and a saving. There is some in the savings, the bulk of it's in the checking.
And that's the account that gives the office of the thrift we have.
Yes, yep.
And what did, what did we want it to say?
All the, because we could look at all of the numbers, Mindy had no concerns with any of the spending. So the focus was only on the fact that we could not produce a policy. Instead, this is how this money is spent. And that's what I'm hoping to accomplish.
Amy wants to go by new check.
Yep. Yeah.
And she comes to you and says.
She has a card. We get an invoice. Like we did recently, and I, we checked in with Amy on it only to let her know that this account is now lower than it ever has been before. And we just want to make sure that you're aware of what's in it so that you don't think that this card has some sort of unlimited money. They were all appropriate things. One of them is, and Amy and I talked about this, one of the expenses was for face covering that do say South Promison. I said, hey, that, that could be a COVID thing. You shouldn't have expensed it there. You should have worked with us, and we can, we can get a reimbursement for that. The other was for, I believe, jackets or some sort of shirts, more nice-to-have type things, reward the employees. It's all donated money. But that was the, the only thing was there is no policy. So Amy has a card, and she goes in and pays for things with it. We, we get an invoice from something, we go and pay it. But it is loose because we just don't have a policy.
What happens when somebody donates?
It gets deposited through Amy.
We accept it as a donation.
And I, so that was.
Right. That was one of the things. If someone donated ten bucks, do we? Well, that, that was a guidance given. I remember that well.
And I'm not sure, I just haven't observed enough, I guess, the sources of money that came in. I believe the bulk of it comes when she would do her town meeting, like bake sale. And so it would be one bigger deposit and not a at-will, someone gave a little bit here and there. People do.
Yeah, people, people send in a couple of months. And they're saving their lives. They're very generous, but.
And we've gotten money for, say, fire department. Some, you know, the fire department goes in, sets up a sump pump, pumps out someone's basement. They don't get a bill. They're very appreciative. They send a hundred bucks. We've either put that under revenues for the fire department, or we might try to see if there's an appropriate place to do an offsetting revenue. All those monies we always bring to the board for approval and accepting those. I think one of the things that we also want to figure out, just like with the landscaping project, is if you set up an account specific for these type of donations, do we have to bring them to you for approval, or are we simply bringing to you all communication that we received it? We deposited it. It's now in this auditable fund. Do we, you know, we get three different fifty-dollar checks. Do we tell you that we put it in there, or do we bring it to you so that you can vote on accepting it?
Well, the purpose of that, recognize the bill. Right, we assume that the transactions have integrity, I think. Oh, and I'm sorry if I don't look behind me. I apologize.
I just want to point out that one time, or several times, we have had substantial grants come out. And the town has kept them in the line, and I applied for my budget, and we had eight thousand dollars for automating, and we left that there, and we paid our yearly subscription to Library World. That was highly used up, and then we had to convert it into our year of budget. But it was sort of like a reserve account line. It wasn't in the bank. It was, it was just in town coffers. But that needed not to lapse into surplus at the end of the year. It was carried over that we were able to spend it to, for the automation.
And that would have been in a special room to come. That's, that's fine.
So is that what?
I don't think that's the.
Or donation?
I don't think that's the issue here, but.
But now we're getting donations to the library. There will be some grants required.
Well, if the grant, the grant is for the library or for the town, then it is the town.
But was that what I would need?
And I don't think you need to put it in a separate checking.
No, no, I would have just put it in an account that doesn't last into surplus.
Right, right, and that would be a special revenue.
So last little bit, and let's, and then we can move on to a conversation about what you all want me to bring back to you next month as far as draft policy. I'm basically building on that, which is all of the accounts should at the end of them be under that Machias dashboard, all with the town's EIN. But like you're saying, John, in a special revenue so that they don't, there is no commingling, and we have to do something so they don't roll into surplus. That's the benefit of setting up these specific accounts. We take them, and then also, like Penny and I talked, the goal with this is to basically have no operational change for department heads, but to have better understanding and better accountability for the funds. And when Penny and I talked it out, it seemed anyway, please correct me if I'm wrong, bringing this account into the town eventually might actually save her a little bit of time. Because if she gets a check in, instead of her having to drive to the financial institution in Rockland, she can just bring it right here to the town office. We can run that check through the Canadian machine, and that money goes directly into that account. And then as long as the policy says Penny has the ability to spend a certain amount at her discretion, then there's no real change for her in how she does things. It might make it a little bit easier on her as far as doing these deposits. And then when Mindy comes back to our audit, we can just produce all the books on it.
Yeah, I, I would support that we mirror image what we did with the ambulance. Same kind of thing. We really did change the way the director. Same kind of thing. He really didn't change the way the director.
Right.
Out of the money. It just brought it into an auditable. And, and it was under the town's E I N.
And, and I, I think we should do that.
That way when somebody writes a check, town of South Thompson Library. It will recover.
That I completely agree.
Process. We, we should accept the donation. As well, which is, I think we want to thank the donor. Unless they want to remain anonymous. And I think, uh. Rather they come in bulk. In other words, say I got five donations for fifty dollars each. And we, we accept them all at one time at a regular meeting. Or whether we do it individually, I mean, I, I would be in favor of doing them in bulk. I mean, that's fine. But each one of them ought to be recorded in our minutes so that we've got. You know, there were, we received five donations for the library of fifty dollars each. And then support it, set there to prove them.
And I suppose to, to just add clarity to that because I don't disagree at all. Um.
That's just my opinion, Joe.
Yeah, for the record, the, the question really is, uh, we get done with this meeting today. I go and get the mail tomorrow. There is a check in it for the ambulance. Do we have to physically?
Make the ambulance. The check is made up to the ambulance?
Yeah, to South Thompson Ambulance Department. Thanks for saving my life.
Okay, that's right. Looks, okay. Now I know what you're talking about.
Now, the, the question for us is. Do we physically hold on to that check as we have been? We don't deposit it. We wait until your next meeting. And we get you all. That's what we've been doing because it says town select board approved gifts or donations.
Say approved for deposit.
And so that's why I'm looking for some clarity because it gets cumbersome sometimes, but hold on to these checks. Make sure we don't lose them. We've got them in the right place.
You shouldn't be holding checks.
Basically, no, every day. No, and that's, that's why I'm asking some clarity because that's.
It's constantly must be tracked up so that next meeting you can say.
And I put them under communication so that we can thank them, um, and, and all that stuff. It was really just. Not knowing. How the process went. This is what it was indicated to me. We haven't gotten these approved by the, accepted by the select board. So we physically were holding on to checks until you all said yes, put it in.
I wouldn't spend. Like just yet. Deposits because we, for some reason, we don't want to take something back. And that's what happens. To take a donation. We, we could take it back.
Yeah, and I, clear delineation on what we're talking about here. There is a massive difference between someone saying, I want to give. Uh, one acre of land to the town versus I donate fifty dollar. And anything outside of a, a small donation or a certain amount of money. Obviously, we would hold on to that and bring it to the board. It's around some of these ongoing thanks, fire department for something out my basement, et cetera.
But, but, but I agree with you. I, I don't think we need to. Just developing a policy on this could take forever. I mean, you could chase your tail over. I, I think. I think we should. Move that account that Penny has out from under her social security number. That's what it is. And meet. You know, mirror exactly what's going on in the ambulance and, and, and don't. I mean, I just see that as step one. And then work on, you want to work on a complicated call.
Well, on, on that, it would be very easy for us to do that. We did that with the landscaping project. We could get that done by the end of the week. That's not a big deal.
Have a separate checking account.
Yes. Yep. Because, uh, this is not something that was on the books.
I don't want it to one time.
Nope, it was, it was designed as an ongoing, uh, phased project. And so the way that we've been doing it is we've been taking all the checks that are designated for that. We run them through the Panini machine. We deposited directly into the landscaping account. We take the hard checks and we keep them all on the spot. So when someone says, can we thank the donors? We have multiple ways in which we can generate that list.
You're doing bookkeeping by checking.
Uh, we've multi. They, I mean, every time money goes in and goes out, it's recorded in the digits here. Um, but the thing around the policy is I, I do not want it to be a complicated thing. Again, I want it to be. Operationally, almost no change. Mindy did say we need to have a policy. So what I was going to try to do is a very stripped down version of the purchasing policy.
Yeah, I, I would turn it back to Amy and back to Penny and let them tell you what, what they want to do.
Policy, in my opinion.
Something broken. We could kind of formalize what they're doing already is all we're talking about.
And they only have been concerned with me now that we've sort of taken this stuff publicly and addressed it. Maybe we need to have a warrant. Authorize certain public expenditure, display information. That would be part of our policy. If I cover.
But just for, um, education. When we get these checks for the landscaping thing, we put them into the landscaping account. Um, individuals will like, they'll have expenditures that plant unlimited, for example, and they, they bought a bunch of plants. We will pay that invoice, but we only pay that invoice once the amount in that account exceeds what the invoice is.
Who's responsible for it?
Uh, the individual that made that expense. Cause if we didn't make that expense. We pay for that expense once there is enough money in that account.
No. Barbara writes.
And they have graciously kind of put themselves on the hook for these expenses until the revenue is there for us to then.
So you don't reimburse them. The town of South Thompson is not purchasing.
Um, this has been based on a decent amount of trust. Actually, no, we don't reimburse them. And, and basically there is an understanding. With the individuals that, that we will pay this.
Who is the, who is the invoice made up?
Town of South Thompson.
The town of South Thompson is on the.
Right, but we just, we don't, like, we held on to the plant's unlimited one until we had enough money in the account to pay it.
That's why I said you could chase your tail forever.
Yeah. Okay.
What's the action here? The, the action is.
I like. I like Jan's. That's Penny and Amy to document what they do. That with those.
How they want to manage.
How they want to manage.
The only thinking that I had was around general uniformity and giving some general.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll pull it together.
You have to do feedback from them to stop. Otherwise you're a third person involved. I'm not sure. Why you, why you want to do that. I thought those two department heads who are already managing that money. They, hey, come to this like board with a memo or something. How you want to do it. We'll talk about it. We'll agree to it. That's the problem.
I'm envisioning something about this long.
And you all. So I did do that. You don't have a policy in front of you. So, I mean, I can do that again, but just understand that it falls on the department head to do that, which is fine and, and great. Because we had gotten to beyond just one account. Just the ambulance account. Now we have the ambulance account. We're going to absorb the library account. We have the landscaping. There might be other ones. It didn't seem like a poor idea to do a very basic policy template.
Well, if the building and grounds guy, you can do the same thing for the, for the grounds. Okay.
But, but. Right, and then give it to the department heads to doctor up. To be specific to library expenses, to be specific to ambulance expenses. But have the bones of the policy be shared. So if we make a new account, we grab that old policy, we sub out, because now it's the conservation commission. Now it's the. Uh, you know, community center. Now it's the whatever. We have a grab of. Policy for, uh, special revenue accounts and then they take out the stuff that doesn't make sense, sub in the stuff that they did. I thought it would be easy if I just took some things that I saw in the purchasing policy that made sense. For thresholds, put that down and then ship that off to the department heads for them to make specific to what they do.
Who has signature authority on the account? Who has signature on the landscaping account?
Uh, Phil and I on the landscaping account. I have signature on all of the accounts.
Signature authority on the ambulance.
Amy, David and I, from my understanding, though I'm questionable about David. I know Amy and I know I, but I believe David.
Someone, the treasurer or assistant treasurer can sign town check.
No, and that's the weird thing is. The signature is.
I don't care about the approval one. The real one.
Yeah, that's me and Amy, but Amy, there's a card.
Amy can sign a check?
The, she would have to get the check from us. But we don't have any checks for her account. So. That's why I'm bringing this conversation to you all because there maybe has.
What's called in my experience, a food service. Is that true?
Uh, she can buy things and doesn't have to tell me and then we get an invoice. That's what I know. She has a card.
What kind of card?
A debit card specific to that account, or she says, I want this item. Send an invoice to the town of South Thompson.
Who's? This is Machias bank card. Her name.
With someone's name on it. That's why I'm bringing this conversation.
And that's the same thing with the. It sounds like it's the same thing with the landscape setup. Certain people can go and charge things.
No, the landscape account has no card tied to it, no card generated. Because, um, it was free. We have five checks that can be made out monthly from that account.
Who can sign those checks? Who can walk into the store?
Phil and I. And all of those checks are locked up at the end of the night as we do our.
I personally feel either the treasurer or the assistant treasurer should be holding people to sign checks. That's just my first.
You don't have the answer to the question. Who else?
Uh, board members empowered to be co-signatories on these checks, so that's.
Well, that's how, that's, that's an internal control process. If we sign it, the treasurer doesn't, the bank shouldn't own it.
And again, that's why we're having this conversation because there is confusion and ambiguity around how.
Because the bank has the signature card.
I wasn't around when the ambulance thing got put together. I've never actually seen the card. I have no idea. And when I asked the department head to produce a policy that said how it functions, that we couldn't do that. So. We, the, the, the request was to work on a policy that could be brought in front of the board. COVID happened. There was a lot of flexibility given. Now we're under new dynamic. We're going to absorb another new account with new spending. And it seems to make sense that we have some policy that says. Who can sign, like I put up questions to think about in my report. Who do you want to have be signers on it? How, what is their flexibility?
I want the treasurer or the deputy treasurer.
Yeah.
I don't know that. I'm comfortable with that. I prefer maybe to stay a friend of the library with our. Books they all want me and when I have to go rock foul computer and my computer, I'm able to write a check. I use my debit card to buy. Books for book club as needed. I'm, I'm, all I wanted to know is what to do. With. Some bigger donations that I see coming than I picture answering up on you. And I don't really even need them in a checking account that I can spend willy nilly. I just need them in a special reserve. You know, veterans account that's not going to last.
Yeah, but that, that's not a problem. That's not an issue. That's, that's not what we're talking about here. That, that's, that shouldn't be any issue whatsoever. But if, if, if you're selling books that belong to the town of South Thompson.
Well, I'd say probably two percent of the books we sell. At the book and bake sale. Are withdrawn books that. Are taken out of library. Most of it's donated.
Well, you shouldn't have your own social security number.
Well, I'm not sure if that would have been set up. I don't know.
Sounds like we need a lot more info. It's not like.
Yeah, I, I guess I would propose. That the treasurer view. See who's on the signature card.
At the bank.
Cause I don't, I don't think Penny knows. I don't think you know. Maybe Amy knows.
I can't pull anything from their account. You can ask her to show it to you. I, I can do that.
Yeah, I think she's right here, actually.
I can, uh, see what's readily available, um. Through Machias first thing in the morning with Phil on the ambulance one. And then we can call Machias and confirm certain things. That, that's for sure. We're happy to do that.
I don't, I mean, I hear what, what John, John Walter is saying, but. I really would like the department head to have the flexibility to spend from that account. They spend other money that we appropriated for them in their departments. I guess I'm not sure why we can't trust.
They don't make up the checks.
Well. I guess a purchase order is not a check.
Well, and that goes back to my end goal for this whole process was to have it operationally not changed for the department head. But that we have some policy that's reasonable and that if someone says what's going on with this account. I don't have to go to Penny and say, can you help me get authorization to look at your account in a different bank? We can pull everything up that was spent through that ambulance account. I just can't do the same with the others. So I mean, that's the end goal is to have it not be a burden on them. Things stay the same, but we can account for this stuff. If you all have questions, we can answer your question. Right now I can't.
Well, I think step one is to determine whether the funds in that account are town funds or not town funds. And if some of them are town funds, then it needs to be a town account.
What's your demarcation line for that?
If the check was made out. To the town of South Thompson or to the South Thompson Library. Or if someone walked in with cash and said, I'd like to donate this to the South Thompson Library, then that's town money.
None of that flows through my eyes.
I understand that, but you can talk. If, um, if the books are sold, any of them. Doesn't matter whether it's two or one, then I think that makes that town money.
I don't disagree and especially where it's the town department.
Me, I'm telling you.
Oh, no, and I, I very much agree that it, it would be my opinion. That basically any money that goes on. With the library is basically town money because it's a town department.
Right. Unless it's, if someone says, I'd like to donate this to the friends of the South Thompson Library, then that's different.
And my question, I don't believe that organization exists.
You don't care.
Right.
But what do you care if it exists?
Well, because then that scenario that you're presenting is realistic.
I know, but it's not, it's not our affair. If someone gives money for the friends, but that's between whoever the friends are.
Yes, I, I guess I only brought it up that theoretically then everything that Penny has received is for the town because there is no organization called the Friends that.
Probably, yeah, it probably is.
How much is their days ago?
Now, after her most recent purchases, um. A hundred and something dollars.
So we have spent the better part of an hour. A hundred and something dollars.
Well, it started out more than that and what we've spent the last hour talking about, my opinion, is trying to resolve something that our auditor brought up to us as efficiency.
Yeah, it's interesting. We, when we took that account into the town, it was several thousand dollars, like ten, fifteen thousand dollars.
That's why we reached out to Amy to let her know it was lower than we'd ever seen it before.
Any of those accounts have the potential to get there based on that dollar.
And also how much our office gets involved in knowing the transactions that are happening. We didn't know until Phil pulled up Machias and saw that there was a low amount and then we got invoices. From items that were purchased. All were good items. All made sense. There's just, there is no policy guiding this process and so we get kind of hit with things and they bubble up and then we try to make sense of it.
We do need to talk about it because I think we have a policy on the, on dollar amount. That not gave the authority for the director to spend by that will, but I think it was five, I'm going to say five hundred dollars. That's off the top of my head. If it was five hundred dollars or more, that they need to come to us. And talk to us and say, hey, I want to, I want to buy, you know, a piece of equipment or I want to buy a thousand dollars worth of jackets or something like that.
Based on that, that's why I wanted to mimic lightly the purchasing policy because it already has that tiered system. What's discretion? What needs approval? That's all I was saying on a light trimmed down purchasing policy. That says zero to X amount, you have discretion on, we just account for it. Beyond that, you have to come and it just needs to be, who do they come to? Because the ambulance has their own board, the library has their own.
You want to originate this thing, right? So if we originated, we'd give it to the department. Cause I, I want to know if they agree with it.
And, and I agree with, I agree with you. And I think we do need to talk about it because I think particularly in this town, this is a sensitive issue, even if the money is not, you know, a couple thousand bucks clear enough. So, uh, that's a bad.
Yeah. And I would do that and I was just asking for marching orders so that what I give to the department heads for their review and then eventually makes it to you all isn't something that's wildly different. and then eventually makes it to you all isn't something that's wildly different than what you were expecting to see. So that's why I asked a probing question and just wanted to get some general guidance on what you want it to look like when it eventually falls in front. Love it. Done.
Streetlights.
Not a huge update. Walter and I will get together in the next day or so to go over the CMP item to sign that over. We did finalize everything with Matthias. We had to work with Mindy on where exactly those monies go because we're, we are going to have to create a new line. Does this go under debt service? Does this go under streetlights? Where exactly within Trio do we place this thirty eight thousand dollars to then pay invoices out of as it relates to just accounting purposes? Is it its own standalone account? These are the questions. When we do a new financial thing, we look at what we've done in the past and then we reach out to Mindy and say, for example, there was a loan for this expansion that we're sitting in right now. It's under debt service. That seems like the most appropriate place to put it. However, it's related to streetlights. And there's a place in the Trio budgeting system for streetlights. Mindy, where do you want us to place this money so that I can start spending out of it and account for it? But yeah, I mean, once we get moving on that, we, we bought ourselves a little bit of time with the installation going on in the surrounding community. So there's not pressing with headstrong saying, we wanna do this now. But Walter and I will tie up some of the, the loose ends over this coming week and move forward on that. Island Road? Island Road, like I say in my report, Garley and Dorski has been working on the permitting aspect of this because of the amount of time DEP and Army Corps need to spend with our application. We can do minor tweaks to the plans and we can work on bid spec documents over time, getting the permits out to these organizations as soon as possible is preferable. The only thing that's been holding us up is getting that really solid, warm and fuzzy from the landowner that they are willing to do a land swap.
Who's handling that?
So I brought in Kristen Collins, our attorney, on understanding exactly the nuances of how the road sets. It's only funny because.
Who's handling the negotiation with the property owner?
Myself.
You say I am waiting to hear more on their willingness.
Yep, so.
Than IU?
And our engineer. So I have looped in the engineer and the attorney and our code officer and our assessor so that we understand exactly what we're dealing with. I am the primary point of contact.
Would you feel qualified when a lawyer calls you from the property owner and says something a little above, you feel comfortable that you, you know enough about the legal aspects of whatever he's talking about to, to say, okay?
Sounds great.
No, I feel comfortable that if I get that call, which I would love to get that call, that I can say, thank you very much. I appreciate this. Let me now connect you with our attorney so that you can have that. I looped in Kristen so that she could have documents prepared for us, review what we were discussing to see if she had input on it. She had some questions. I put her in touch with the engineers to do that. The conversations that we've had with the landowner have now included the engineer as the person that can answer questions to detail. And again, just the, one of the slight oddities of this and why Kristen needed some explanation. There are two different lots in the map and lot system. However, they're the same lot in the deed. But they're on either side of the road. So do they own under the road or do they own on both sides of the road? How does that work? That's what Kristen's been going through to dictate what document the landowner has to sign. And then the engineer, the code officer and myself have been working primarily as it relates to the end state for these properties and the opportunities that the landowner has to develop or build or do anything on these properties with land swapping from one side to the other. We could go into it.
Yeah, you don't wanna go there. You don't wanna even be a part of that.
Have, have she determined whether it's a public investment or, or we own the face of the road?
I haven't gotten the final word back from her on that. I can ping her again on that.
Do we have a, do we have an end date on when we're gonna put this together and if we don't, we're gonna go option B?
No.
Not that it's cast.
My role in that question specifically was because I'm familiar with our system. I pulled up all the map and lots and then all the booking pages for the deed provided those to Amy or to Kristen.
No, no, no. We have an end date on when.
Right, but I just wanted to, the, the first one on answering.
Yes or no? Do we have an end date on when we're gonna go with either option A or what, or we're gonna move to option B?
No.
That's all I want.
Nope.
So who's got the next act?
My next action is.
Your next act. What's Kristen's next?
Kristen's next act.
When is Kristen? Athanas's lawyer going to converse and get this field done?
Well, that's kind of where I was going. We have an end date on that.
Yeah, who do they need to help them with that process? Other than Garley that, that Andrew, the only other person I think we should get involved.
So we, the engineers and myself have provided the Athenas representatives with direct contact to the property owner with all information that they've requested. They have been thinking about it or something. I have sent a reminder to their representative saying, we'd like to move forward on the permitting, but we can't do so until we have a better understanding of any residual concern. And I have not heard back from him. I emailed him the beginning of last week, Tuesday of last week, I believe. And this was after we had provided them, not just me, we had a call with the code officer, the engineers, myself and the family's representative, where they displayed any concerns that they had or questioned. And then the engineers provided documentation, imagery and.
The attorney back talk.
Because there's, yeah, we haven't gotten to that point. And my, my sense, which I know people's senses can definitely be off. I hate it when people say my sense is. But my sense is by the time it gets to the attorneys, it's just a formality. It seems to be that the bulk of what they wanna figure out is what their options are with these properties if we move the road. And as long as we haven't constrained those opportunities for them, they're fine with it. They sign off.
Who's gonna tell them if they have to constrain?
Myself and the engineers.
No way to tell? How people classically qualify to make a statement like that?
Because I have engineers that provide me pretty pictures.
Okay, I don't think you guys have, this is a legal transaction.
Yep, so what?
This kind of goes back to my discussion I've thrown at you.
The impetus of it is this. There's a half an acre on the operational side, one point four on that side.
You pipe that all through this. I understand all of that. But the legal transaction has got a big place, the attorneys have got engaged.
And I.
Because somewhere there has to be an agreement signed by both sides.
Yep.
That's legally binding.
I have communicated to the family representative that as soon as they want those papers, we stand ready to provide those papers. If you have any remaining concerns, please let us know. If you want us to give you papers to sign, we'll give you papers to sign. I just haven't heard anything from him in the last week.
I don't know how to break this log down, but all I can do is. This is something that's really important to us. And to the Phanases, I think it's of minimal importance. And that's why it doesn't bubble up to them having any sense of urgency to bring this closure. Why, I'd really like to have Kristen find their lawyer, whoever it is, say, we need to do this. But it's in the best interest of your client.
I don't think that you need a motion. But is, is there consent? You don't need a motion for that, but is there consensus amongst the board that you want Kristen to take a more active role in this?
I think she asked it.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I don't think we'll let this drag on forever. I think we need to, they're gonna do it or they're not. And if they're not, we'll move along with option B.
I, I took what you all gave me for guidance last month very seriously. I was not trying to do it on myself. It was all done in conjunction with the hired professionals that we have that can answer these, these questions in great specificity. A lot of it, and I don't wanna like harp on this, but is the property gonna go below one acre? That's really what it all goes around.
I don't think the engineer could be able to answer the question that, that the property owner wants to know, which is if I do this, are there any restrictions on my ability to deliver on it? No, why should we be answering that question?
That's up to them.
The town shouldn't.
That's up to them to figure out.
Yep, that's an attorney kind of question. And what's the statute? What's the law?
And well, the law is our town ordinance.
No.
Yeah, as it relates to the development of those properties. Yeah.
I'll bet their state statute that guides our order.
Well, I mean, for shore land zoning.
Particularly in shore land.
No, no, and that's what sets the base, what the communications.
Either way, it's still a legal discussion.
Yeah, but it's also, it's interesting because it's like a, it's a future oriented theoretical discussion, which we've had, I've had with that individual. He recognizes that the town, the board could put something out that says half acre minimum, no longer one acre minimum. We can take what the state says. We can restrict it. We can't expand it. We can't say something different. But you could, I'm sorry, you could go, you need more land, not less land, sorry. But they recognize that that is at the discretion of the town. And so they're saying, I understand you can't tell us where the town's gonna be in 10 years. What we wanna know is what your ordinance is today. If we move the road in this direction, how much would that reduce on this side and does it go below and limit what we can do? And our answer by way of the engineers was if we did it exactly how our plans were, we're reducing you by point one of an acre, going from one point four to one point three. You still enjoy all the same privileges until you go below one acre, which is not gonna happen in this project as we currently have it designed.
Assuming that they own what they think they own. If they own an acre and you're saying, okay, we're a naked one point three and we're only taking point two, okay, then they have one point one. Yes, it works. But if they don't own one point three, they own one point one and we take point two. And also if they have point nine.
Yeah, at some point, I would think this, it needs to be surveyed.
And what we.
We know where those property boundaries are.
It has been surveyed. That's how we got our stuff.
I just agree with you. I think the attorney.
And last thing I, I suppose is I, when I had my initial conversation with the assessor's agent, it was trying to understand what would be left over for acreage. He said, our technology isn't smart enough to do that. You'd really be asking me to like do something way outside of what we normally do. And then talking with Garley and Dorski, their software and the inputs they've given based on this specific project allowed them to map out and then do a very quick click of a button and it spits out total acreage remaining. So that's what we're basing the whole, you would still enjoy the same privileges for building. What you're constrained on is where you can build and that's what the engineers provided.
So you've already answered their question.
All of them.
Now we're just wondering why they haven't responded.
Correct. Every question that they've asked and I've asked, if there's any questions they haven't had.
We budgeted money this year for this project. That's obviously not gonna happen.
Yep.
We budgeted ninety one thousand for paving. That's not gonna happen. I mean, that was the only thing that was out of our budget.
Correct.
And so all that money.
Right?
No, no, no. Ten or fifteen thousand dollars from, from the.
We had to close it, yeah. Right, but it's all, it's all advantage. Isn't it all for paving?
Or no? Well, that, that's where it fell in the budget. It fell under, no, John, John is correct that there is a line in the budget that says paving and the funding for that line came from three different sources.
So are you telling me that paving is not for paving?
It's paving. And it's, it's paving, but the grant is a reimbursement.
I don't talk about the grant. I'm talking about the ground.
You need to talk about it because we're gonna write a check to Garley and Dorski. And that's, we're gonna write them a check where they're.
And we're gonna take that out of paving.
No, we're, we're gonna hopefully take that out of the grant.
Wow, okay. I don't care about that. The, the point is, we're not gonna spend that money this year.
The bulk.
Correct.
But on that, that line specifically, this is what I anticipate anyway, until Mindy or someone else tells us to do it a different way. You know, Garley and Dorski send us an invoice. We will pay that invoice out of the paving. We will then pay, oh yeah, and then we're gonna.
You just do it general, general, and you don't impact the budget. You don't need to do that. You're just waiting on a reimbursement.
So how do I pay Garley and Dorski?
It's not a, you pay Garley and Dorski, but that's just.
Yep, and my understanding is that I can't get a reimbursement until I produce an invoice. And I guess I could ask Garley and Dorski to.
You can pay them, but you don't have to expense it under paving or under the. It's not a.
Okay.
So the fifteen thousand, that's a thirty six thousand dollars with a paving budget?
Yep.
Don't like that.
The quick thing is it's all gonna go to designated.
No, I would, I would advise against that.
We don't.
Okay, but then our commitment to fulfill our twenty two percent then gets null.
Well, because I, yeah, we can. I don't, I don't like to hear the term. But we did intentionally put it in favor because we had to show our share of what we were gonna pay. And that was, we had to consolidate all of them kind of one place.
In the, in the budget notes.
Budget notes, phrase it out. Exactly.
And it was all, it's the funding sources. We had three different funding sources that then got pooled into one line to be able to show.
Okay.
This is what we got.
What about the vandalized? Vandalized.
We just got today two of the actual road street signs that were removed. They weren't vandalized, but they were removed. L W Point and then another one. I can't remember what the other one was. That's separate from the speeding sign.
Which was the, was the L W Point one replaced by?
Jerry's there. Okay, that one. And then there was other street signs. So Jerry got the L W Point one. There were other street signs that were stolen. Those just came in to be replaced. We haven't yet received the new speed limit signs that we all need to replace.
How were those paid for?
All out of the sign budget. Gary and I talked about this.
When they, when they're penalizing the general.
That was one of the things. So when Jerry and I talked about it, typically we try to be very thoughtful about managing expenses and make sure that we're good on these things. Very, in my opinion, was this is a public safety matter, both for emergency first responders to know where the road is and also for a speed limit. And so we, I said, buy the signs, we'll pay for them. If we overspend the sign line, we have very good justification for why we did it. But I didn't think that we needed to do, when it came to public safety, this very robust evaluation. We need. Yeah, and that was, there's a sense within some in town who they think is doing it. The difficulty is proving it. If it's provable and then there's litigation, you can collect that way, but it's a very cumbersome process.
All right. He found the signs that were painted up?
And, and road signs.
Those can't be cleaned up. They can't be cleaned.
I asked Jerry about that. He thought that the quality of paint was amazing and that trying to rehab those signs would be difficult.
Oh, I did it with retro wash right away. If you're gonna find those street signs, you're much tougher than the paint.
I, I brought that up. Jerry did not believe that it was salvageable. I, I brought that up, Jerry did not believe that it was salvageable.
So, don't throw them away.
I made.
Jerry, hold on a minute. I'm not sure he's right. I had a lot of street signs on my country basis. I need a lot.
I will, I will let him know.
Yeah, I'd like to drop.
Yep.
Okay. Can we move on to?
Yep.
Uh, I put this in here for us. Because I think we've been not investing in keeping up with the preservation of the name of our assets. And this list, I think, shows. What's left in the budget?
Is that a question for me?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm just making sure there weren't.
Wait a minute, so this is stuff we're trying to do this year with this year's budget?
No, I, no.
Okay, somebody's got $10,000 of dollars, I'm going to say, yeah. No, it's there to, to show the bank through the problem, okay.
Um, I'm not entirely sure, and let me tell you why. There were three items that we put in for building maintenance, not unanticipated, because we have two different building maintenance, we have known things that we want to fix and then the unknown. We budgeted based on estimations, make sure that we had enough money to accomplish those three tasks. What were, one was upgrading the sensors in the emergency bay, because there's a shelf life on the chemicals that are in them to smell what's going on in the air and kick the fan on or not. So it's upgrading our system, but not upgrading it, bringing it back into alignment. Upgrading the system would look different, but that is something that we have not yet done with there, to come in and change out all of the sensors and do that upgrade. There were, it was the trim, soffits maybe, the terminology around big bay doors, I'm not just entirely sure about, but there were items that were hanging down and sagging down. And we put money then to fix those. And then the last was finishing up the trim in the emergency bay so that it doesn't look just like sheet rock terminating and that there's actually trim around.
The real concern for me.
Right. Hey, is it in the budget there?
I'm sure it is.
And Brian has taken that task on, on getting those items done. He believes that he's going to accomplish the bay door repairs and the trim for much less than what we budgeted for. The fair amount has kind of just stuck. And so Brian did ask about exploring if those two items came in under budget, the ability to possibly change out the rusting grates when all of the vehicles drive out, they drive over a drainage that has grates on top. I encouraged him to absolutely look into what it would cost for us to replace those. Not that we're going to do it if the money's there, but we can't even get to that decision-making until we know what, how much it would cost to do that.
There so far, Jerry, you have to replace them.
Oh, they're pretty bad. So when you put.
In what way, metal failing or rusting?
Uh, rusting to the point to where it's difficult for it to get it out and then they cuff and bow and start to stick up. We tried flipping them around and having it dip. The bigger concern is around the tires driving over them and any sort of puncturing of the tires. We've talked about salvaging them.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So, is this, uh, the wish list?
So is this list just this building?
Yeah.
No, no priority with it, right? Because I don't see anything like the little red schoolhouse, I think maybe, probably more than paint, but. And I don't see anything on salt shit here, so, but, so this is just for this building?
Correct.
Okay, and why does we, why do we need, does AC needs to be installed in the emergency bay? Why, why, is that a want or need?
This is, so this list was generated both by me and by Brian. If, so I'd be going back into my memory. And my memory is that the fire department has air conditioning units that they would put in to cool that bay down if they had the proper 220 voltage to do so. So do they actually need it or something like you want? You're asking the wrong department, okay. I mean, I, I asked.
I, I want some certain things too, but it doesn't mean I need them.
So, just so you know, I, the direction given from me to Brian.
Yeah.
Was a wish list.
Okay.
And that the board would work with us on prioritizing these things.
And, because my questions relate mainly to Brian, so I assume any question I ask, you're going to say, I need to talk to Brian.
I mean, I give it its stat, I'll tell you.
Well, we've been around and around on this fly movement system, I mean, if I could.
Yeah, yeah, that's Brian, that one's a Brian.
A dollar. And supposedly set up some sort of exhaust system to deal with that when we did the renovation. So I guess my question is, is that not working or is this? I mean, to me, that, this, that's not a maintenance, that's a capital.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, and that one is predictable, but.
My understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, what you're referring to, John, is the system of which we're going to be doing sensory upgrades to. And what that system does is particles will be emitted from the vehicles. Once they raise to a certain parts per million, that the system says it's not healthy for humans, the system kicks on, the fan up in there that we inspect every year goes on and it starts exhausting the whole bay out. The plimo vent goes right onto the exhaust itself and is constantly shipped out.
I'm aware of that, but it's, it's the same, it accomplishes supposedly the thing, that. Not, not as effectively perhaps.
Right. And then there's, you know, you, you do have people exposed to just below the threshold of the amount, I mean.
So, but the roadside sign upgrade, is that related in here or is that just in general?
That's to, like the sandwich board and the sign that says, "Belt Roms" on that off.
They're not talking.
Nope, nope.
So.
If, if I could offer some guidance.
I'd like to see how the remaining budget is going to be set. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And all of, just to try to move it along a little bit, I was going to say, this is a bit of a wish list and an amalgamation of capital improvements plus maintenance. If you all tell me which ones you fully support, then I can get quotes for those and have them be part of our budget discussion come December, January. If there are other things that you want to see in capital that you do think are worth it, but just under a different format. So if you went through and said, front steps replaced, absolutely, I wouldn't give us a quote on that, which I believe you're going to say. And then come budget season, I'll have a quote that says it's going to be $2,500 to replace this thing. And then you, I know that you want gutter work and I know you want this and I know you want that. I can get you accurate numbers for the budget. But if it's something that's a nice to have, then, you know.
I didn't want nice to have, what I want to, other assets, you're right. Because of lack of maintenance. And what I brought to the board is that we don't have, if I, the steps I can fill, we don't have a go-to person. That's working out. Exactly. And I heard from a little birdie that once, recently, that our head administrator was up on the roof. But I'm really opposed to that. That's not what we're paying for. And I know you're well-meaning, but, hey, is it, is it true?
Oh, yeah.
Exactly what, you clean the dirt.
They have grasses growing in there.
I have to confess, I've been on the roof too. It's not since my, it's not since this guy.
I've worked on the bathroom vent, I, I install the AC unit, I work on light.
I think it's on the select.
To me, when, to me, when nobody's accountable, then we don't have anybody who's accountable.
I would love for you to give me a building person, please give me a building.
Well, that's, that's why I'm seeing the discussion, is it might not be a first building person, but it may be a series, but we'll contract.
Well, I'm not vetting my personal opinion here.
I don't think there are a couple of things that, I mean, like you say, front steps replaced, I'm not sure they can't be repaired. And I do think we could do something for winter first. Night is a danger, I think, situation, I think, that safety happens. I don't know, when we close them off. Well, that's another possibility. But then you got to make sure that path is shuffled, which is another issue.
And then, not to compound it, but I'm not the ambulance director. That task falls under the ambulance folks.
I got it.
They did a good job.
They did, no, they did a great job.
And I agree with the back steps by the ambulance day, or I, I, I mean, I almost wish they would use it except in emergencies. That would, that would solve, either that, that would solve that problem, actually.
Do you all want to do this now or do you want to take this list home, mark up your priorities, we'll overlay them on top of each other, see what everyone agrees is a priority? And that's at least my initial starting place, I'm getting quotes.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
I can do that, but I don't feel anyone here qualified to tell you what the priority is. You leave it to me, I'm going to cross things off the list. I mean, I don't, I don't know, and I have no idea what they cost.
Yep.
So if my number one priority is a $50,000 item, you know, that probably shouldn't be my number one priority, Penny?
No. Just this bill.
Quickly this bill, yep.
Okay, but, you know, we have an inventory on the winter and that's the program and you can cover it. But we have to do that though.
Yep. Eat it. We, we, we. Yeah, and all those monies for a do no harm approach, this is not a forward progress going to occupy, was putting the buildings and grounds, but specifically Gilford Butler, it's just not a, a maintenance. It is a, again, a do no harm, be able to, have there be electricity, have there be heat, have there be an alarm system.
But we are, we're down the road that I'm worried about boilers not having anybody that's in, and we're looked at. But we haven't had.
Gary, casual?
Yeah. Yeah, there, there are some monies for boiler maintenance, you can put monies in for maintenance. I would say that if something significant went clunk, we, we don't have enough money to cover all of that. We covered enough for maintenance.
I mean, there's a benefit in maintenance.
It should be serviced before the winter, so.
Yeah, but again, we have money in there for that.
But I mean, is there a plan to have that boiler service before, before the winter?
Yep.
Okay. $23,000 when you're building it down, but you know how much money that's obligated? How much is actually available?
For Gil, for Gilford Butler?
For the rest of the year. You say there's money in there. Is there any money in there for any of this? Or is that $23,000 obligated other places?
Well, that's what you explained at the beginning. Yeah, there's, we haven't really dipped into the unanticipated much.
And how much is that?
Oh, what did we put? It's like $2,000, $2,500? No, 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 it wasn't.
So most of it's planned to be spent at some point.
Well, again, there's two different parts, the planned and the unplanned.
Okay, we're going to do that then?
Yeah.
If I don't lose my order, I don't pick one? Well. Prior to me, it's like the must do. I don't know, he must have been reading my mind because the first four up here are left by the mine.
Uh, like, but just for example, on the unanticipated stuff and probably just something I should be doing right now, the one, two, three, four from the bottom, well casing needs to be brought up and protected. You know, that's, that kind of falls into unknown, but not really anticipated. It's not going to be super expensive. You're talking a $200 to $300 fixed to bolt on a new bit of well casing and make sure there's no infiltration. That's the type of thing on this list that we could absorb with our current budget, but there are many other items that would be thousands of dollars to do. That, we just want to make sure that come the 2021 or, you know, in the 18-month budget or whatever, we have good numbers to operate on if you all say we do want to fix these things.
Well, I think once we prioritize, if they're all valid and concerned, then the next thing we have to do is put dollars in.
Yep.
Before the budget fight.
Yep.
Well, I'm trying to, trying to surface.
We're looking, um. What's on appointments?
Um. So we have two sheets for two appointments. One would be for board member John Spear to be key on the Shellfish Board. And then the other would be for Penny Alley, our longstanding alternate to that committee, to be reappointed there. We do them on one-year terms. Cheryl was before Penny was always the alternate. So those are the only two appointments that we have cleanup. And then the other bits, or the two appointments that need to be done, the cleanup and something that kind of got brought up tonight was making sure that when we do any additional appointments, we are doing them with a year length that starts putting stagger to where a third of the people retire or have to be reappointed on a three-year basis.
Exactly. So you're the one that wants to deal the Shellfish.
I do, what I heard.
Alright, so they like. They're the kind of like me.
I hope, I know that. I do, they make that quite clear.
I'm sure.
You do need a vote on that.
Hold on, I, yeah, so why don't, yeah. What are we voting? Okay? We're not waiting. I moved it, I moved it, we appoint John Spear to the St. George's River Shellfish Board. It's St. George's River Shellfish Board Member. And what happened if I don't accept it? I guess there's a place you can do the signing here if you don't accept it. Can't be sworn in. I think the requirement is that it be a select on the board.
Two thirds vote, John. Democracy.
I guess I could. I, I really. George and Trager Shellfish Board Member and Penny Alley is the alternate member of the George and Trager Shellfish Board. Isn't there, there is an alternate though, right?
Yeah.
No, I thought. I thought there was.
That's the thing that, why this wasn't done with all your other appointments, it was the meaning-making from the committee versus the board. That says board, doesn't it?
Board members, yeah.
Yeah, which is different than the committee, which is what Kearney's on.
Right, but there's an alternate on the board.
And the alternate is Penny.
Right, but Penny doesn't want to do it.
I, that's what I asked you, if you were okay with being.
I assumed that was because she said no.
No.
Yeah, you were going to ask her from somebody first.
Organizational meeting after town meeting, huh?
Because I was, the theory was that I would accept it officially and she would attend the meeting, but the alternate. Well, she, that's all the, the, the meeting, right? Who does?
She's on the committee.
The committee, yeah.
So she would understand what's been going on for mission. And I thought she was going to be approached about being involved.
Right, and I probably dropped the ball on communicating with Kearney. I apologize if I overlooked that.
Give it a shot.
Sure. Okay, so then the motion is just for John, the head of the member?
Yes, I'm not by the motion. I move that John Spear be appointed to George and Trager Shellfish Board Member for the town sometimes. Does it have a term?
Second. One year.
Until the town meeting 2021. Actually, the meeting after the end of town. The group is excited, it's all a favor. Congratulations, I'm not abstaining, I'm a full voter. I know, you thought those are all going to be fun, didn't you? I've, I've done enough, John. You will sign, you sign here a little quick, huh? I'm probably not. I have, I was opposed. But you are going to reach out to Kearney. We're going to have to be sworn in. Because I might have sent you Penny didn't want to do it.
I.
We're all photo penny. Don't we have some dates that we need to clean up too? I can't find my notes. I thought we had some dates on them, terms on them.
So.
Although that may become a whole point now that Alan.
Well, and that was the thing is I didn't know, uh, maybe I again misinterpreted. I apologize. Whether you wanted to actually start redoing people's appointments. For periods of time or wait until they were done. And then appoint their successor to a term that gets us back. So it would take us a year or two to get back everyone. So instead of the next person being a.
Non-annual appointment. Yeah, and we got, we got about six people expiring in the same year.
Yeah, 2022.
And I thought we. We can vote on it, but I thought we said so. We were going to. Clean that up and try to get those dates staggered and that would involve extending the term.
And I guess my.
Not new appointments, just extending.
That was probably my misinterpretation that when someone's term came up. Their successor would get appointed to a term length that gets us back. On that right schedule and that we weren't just going to take everyone and start fiddling with their existing term. So for example, with Alan resigning. That gives you all the opportunity if. Sandra, Sandra. If Sandra is amenable to say a one-year term or a three-year term, whichever fits with getting us back to that alignment. That's how I was thinking we were going to do it, but if you want, we can bring everyone's appointments in. And then you can start turning three years to two years. Two years to one year. You want, you want that for the 22nd?
Yeah, I, yeah, I can't find my. But, but I guess we think if you could produce a list of those people who have multi-year assignments. We could look at. Yeah, I mean, it really got out of whack.
It got out of whack with, um, a healthy amount of resignations coupled with us. Expanding how many people could be on and me not being cognizant. That some people needed a one-year or a two-year appointment versus giving everyone a three-year appointment like I did.
Someone had a year left, they would be appointed for three.
Exactly. Instead of me being thoughtful about it, I just kept bringing your people and saying, do it for three years, do it for three years. And because 2019, there was a decent turnover plus adding on new people. We stacked a bunch that expired at 2022. So I was going to do cleanup over time, but I will bring to you on the 22nd. And then I'll reach out to those folks that we might fiddle with and make sure they're okay with having their, their term filled.
So the power for both Yale and Donna were both on now?
Correct.
They were 20.
They were.
So everybody else expires 2022.
No, there's 2021s. I think more than Jeff, aren't they?
Oh, Jeff, 2022. Well, that's what this. Maybe Terry Baines is, she's on it. Maybe, uh. And maybe, but she feels an unexpired. She, she replaced, uh.
I think we need.
Personally, I think we need to get a list of who's currently on with the term. While you're at it, update the website. On, on this, I thought. Oh, without? No, I thought that I did that. Uh, I think, I think it's a couple of weeks out of date. Okay, uh. Great, sorry, maybe. Uh, someone, you mean, quicker. Uh, so fiscal year, uh. Next step. You would? Anybody? I'm ready. So hot? I think, I think we, uh. Should get someone else and then maybe schedule a public hearing just to give. You know, sort of a, a public hearing. So the public information remaining, the remaining question is, we can do Zoom or. In person? If we could use the fire day, we can do it in person. And just have a general presentation of what we're contemplating. Do we have a sense? That we're all contemplating the same thing? Always in the three of us, so. Yeah, I mean, uh, eighteen-month budget. Secret ballot. July 1st to June 30th. Yeah, that's what I think. That's the question. Well, that's what we put on the wire. I understand, but I mean, right. This is sort of a plan. I know it hangs together as different officials. Till somebody votes. Uh, so it sounds. Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. Clearly, we'll find the, uh, budget committee, uh, will be wildly supported on Thursday.
Clarification on the secret ballot. You are looking to, you all set what town meeting is? So are you all in agreement that you would set town meeting for June?
Yeah.
To coincide with state election?
And the school vote.
And the school vote and that also we would have a bifurcated town meeting?
Well, that's a question. I, that was a surprise. Yeah, I mean, most people always do a bifurcate.
They do.
Yeah, I never heard of the way they do it.
Yeah, it's weird. Um, and I, I asked because.
So if you're bifurcated, does that mean that, uh, at seven AM? Moderator and three other, four other people have to show up after the moderator?
Yep.
And then moderator doesn't have to say, and then the moderator says, the meeting is adjourned at eight. See you.
No, the meeting is adjourned the following day.
Yeah.
After open town meeting.
Yep, so there is no, uh. The two-day meeting. The warrant says when to pull the polls. So I get your technique on the town meeting, but nobody.
And because so many other towns do it, like John's saying, it's not rocket science. Really what I'm trying to do is set up so that when we go to do this process. I pulled in the information that you actually, if you don't want to do the bifurcated. I'm not going to bring you what the state says you need for votes or process to transition to that. That's why I'm asking. June town meeting, bifurcated town meeting over two days.
I think it's fifty-three, twenty-eight, thirty. Uh, I read it. No, I, I think. I think it said, everybody do that.
Yep.
Uh, can, can we have two moderators on different days? No, but the moderator is the one that does. The moderator is, I mean, if, if you had, if you didn't have bifurcated, and I think that's part of what John was talking about. They didn't want to have a regular moderator at seven in the morning or. By the great of the morning.
Does that moderator have to be active?
No.
At the phone?
No, no, they can appoint the, uh. The warden or a. Or not the register, but the register is a difference. Register is going to be available in the fall growth, but that's a difference.
We have our go-to election for Warden. Sandy Manahan typically fills that role.
Yeah, I think the election in Warden could be appointed that way. I guess the, uh, the other thing that I think we need to do though, someone. Oh, I. Someone needs to do the cash flow analysis, I think, to see. Ron was pretty strong on that to see what we're pumping up against. You know, it doesn't have to be a piano here. It can be really. Twenty thousand what? But when things are due.
Right, we have that. We, I sent you our initial.
Eighteen months.
And that's, so that's the difference. We have a 12-month cash flow analysis that Phil has basically done. Um, we have not extrapolated out for an eighteen-month yet.
And that's a problem because, because actually, the more I thought about it, you're only going to have a county payment once in that eighteen-month. Right. And then we're only going to cross it on November. So that helps. Yeah.
Yep.
But I do think some of the, you need to know whether to be looking at. Uh, and then, and the reason why, both, I think John and Ron were both big on why, why. I'm convinced more and more that when all is said, they have like John did. I consider the, the idea of, of easy to make a mistake, you're all adjusting things because you're on a different fiscal year than the state is in school. For example, just the homestead. I mean, that, you know. What I never realized that that spits that homestead out assuming based on the current rate and based on the state's current fiscal year. So that's why I think we're much short. Unless, you don't expect to get another payment this year, right?
Nope.
Yeah, yeah, and the reason is just because we're in two different rates, right? So another reason to do it here, right?
And Walter and I were doing emails back and forth on financial stuff and really the, the punchline to all of this is. You know, our fiscal year ends September 31st. We have authorization for a stopgap for one quarter to then approve funding. That we don't then commit for a handful of months, that then we don't yet receive fully until October. And so a decent amount of what we have funded. At say March town meeting doesn't actually get funded until the middle of October. And there is just, there is a lot of financial movement around and a lot of. You know, and so I just. Once the headache of all of this is over. It's going to be the normal process of, we know what everyone's, for the most part, going to be hitting us with expenses. We know what our revenues are going to look like. We approve it and then immediately our fiscal year ends. And we already have approval for what we're going to be spending that second day.
Uh, the other thing that, the meeting material that I sent around from MMA and I didn't realize is even if the. I think the most, personally, I think the most controversial part, I don't. Of the three items, and I don't think any of them particularly, but the one that probably will be the most, what might be, is the electing. Likewise, but the secret ballot. But after reading that stuff on MMA, it sounds like we think we could still elect them the way we currently deal with something we need to do. If for some reason that gets written down. Okay, the other secret ballot. Uh. So is it the? Uh. So special town meeting, I think, the special town meeting approved. Not the fiscal year change. We take that as advisory.
Right.
Uh, that's what I was. Okay, we're on. And then, then the real warrant is, uh. The secret ballot. Secret ballot, yeah, but I do think we should throw out advisory on the tax. Yeah, I do too. So that would be, I mean, I think we need to explain that this all kind of hangs together, even though the approval mechanism are three different pieces. Uh, so. That has to take place to change the secret ballot. Because that's the one. Has to take place ninety days before the town meeting. That, right, if, if. So. If we go forward with this, the only town meeting we're going to have is 2021, June.
Right.
Correct? Well, I suppose we could have one. And change. Remember when I read that MMA stuff, after the charter or ordinance, we can set town meetings. Right, and annual town meeting is generally due at the town meeting when you elect minister law. Or whoever elected him, they haven't elected clerical well, which we don't. And we don't have an issue with school with the most of the year. Unless this person is not. So. Yeah, I mean, I think it's. I think we should plan sometime in October to. To have a public information meeting. I mean, maybe we'll get, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe it will be a huge pushback. I don't think so. I don't know. What do you think, Penny?
I think it makes sense. I don't think that's funny.
Because it's, yeah, right. So, but what's the answer to the what's in the front row question?
Wow. Not speaking for myself, yeah, I know. I mean, Ron's, Ron's big talking point where, uh, brings into alignment with our biggest people. Uh, it lowers the bill. It's a perceived lowering of the bills because at the end of the day, we're still asking for the same amount of money. Um, those were the two, two big ways to take away.
I'm going out to borrow my hand, although quite frankly, it's a very, so, uh, that's almost. Watch it forever.
No, right. Um, and we can flesh this out more over time. But have you all given any thought into the times of which you would ask for the tax collection? Which month specifically? Remember I threw out, um, possibly doing it right after some folks get their tax returns. Um, you know, so maybe not six months, immediately six months apart or, or exactly six months apart.
George does September 4th. Yeah, I think most people typically September 5th. Both towns.
Well, and that's fine. We had talked about possibly keeping it with October because that's what folks were used to.
September 30th, September 1st.
Right, okay, okay, that makes sense, yeah.
I don't think we should change that.
Yeah, ours is October 1st.
Yeah.
I mean. Well, one day.
So I go with first and. The other advantage is. Again, the MMA stuff, right now, when we're doing our budget, we have no idea. Because valuations are set by state law on April 1st, we have no idea what impact that's going to have. We don't, so we think we don't know.
Yeah, exactly.
I always kind of benefit you as an individual, too much of you. I got your question to answer, individual. So. Uh. But I'll. Take, take the action to do a, uh. What, why, how, and when? Uh, that's the point, that, that our master, uh. I think, I think. Collars that up. But I think, I think the message is going to go forward, and I think it's completely kind of a one-page talking sheet. It's in very much a layman's terms. So. I think so, I think people need to understand why. Um, I also think that, I just don't think that doing public meetings.
Well, and that, that was next. That was going to be my question is, as we set up for this. Are we talking about October roughly when in October and roughly, uh, how do you want the meeting to be structured?
I was talking about October for an informational.
Yep, no, that's what I'm saying.
For a special town.
Right, but for that October, roughly what timeframe and how do you want that meeting set up?
I don't know, let it. According to this, between now and the 21st, number one. And remember, I asked, uh. I think his name is.
Bill Corbey.
Right. So he was very willing to, uh.
I know. But I think he needs, this is maybe around the side.
Probably.
Too, or.
I'll, uh, what was that? What, what venue is this? Fellowship Hall at the church?
Oh, okay, okay.
So he was very amiable and, uh, I'll, uh, let Brian know. That we might be, uh. Appropriating this day. We can't be done like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the hard bit. Could be power requirement? Or power of the town. Um, I have a suggestion because we're having another meeting. This poor job of time, I just, uh, I dedicate a question with yours. What were you, what? Um, there are. I think I'm, unless you need something. It's got, it's got to be Adam's report, which I know will take some time. I got lots of questions on this public information segment.
I didn't understand that at all.
Yeah, I, I. For this review, many calls we change. Oh, here it is. I think I might look at it too, but, uh. Put it away. You need something signed. You need some sign, Owen?
Uh, Walter's signing them right now, and they should be passed around.
Well, do we still do a check reconciliation?
We do, that's a better.
I have, keep one of them.
And like I said, we adjourned quickly, and I didn't catch that you, I needed signatures last time.
I don't have much of a finding thing, and I thought it was so. Well, this is the only warrant?
Yes, because we have gotten four members to sign other warrants in interim time.
Right. This doesn't have a signature, right? Yes, it does. Yeah. Yeah, I'll make a motion, go here. I'll send them. Table of remaining items. Sure, I'll, I'll, I want to do the table of remaining items and the voting and the term. Hold the favor?
Hi.
Thanks for, thanks for.
Thanks for persevering.
Thanks, yeah. I'm even subjecting to the torture, Arthur. We only, we only have two, um, Amy, Brian. Brian wasn't in my town. He sent it to you.